Excellent. So, good evening. We'll call our Select Board meeting of Monday, November 17th, to order. I'm Michelle Pryor, joined by Vice Chair Anthea Brady, and members Bill McGonigal, Paris Biani, Mike Bentoncourt, and Acting Town Manager Steve Delaney. We have a couple of public hearings this evening, and we're going to try to move through our agenda. We also have some committees and commissions. So, we may take it on the agenda. We'll, we have no donations, it looks like. We'll hear the town manager's report. We'll invite any public comment. Then, I think we'll move into some appointments. We can do some interviews for the Permanent Street Tree Committee and potentially make the Ridglock Farm appointment. And we'll see how close we get to 7:45 at that point, when our public hearings are going to begin. So, if you could, Steve, give us the town manager's report. That'd be great.
We have two staff appointments to report. I've appointed Joshua Canada from Woburn as a highway working foreman. And his appointment would be a full-time appointment in the highway, in the Public Works Department as a highway working foreman. And I would request that you waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day waiting period to appoint Joshua Canada to the DPW Highway Working Foreman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second appointment is following regular full-time appointment, also in the Department of Public Works, a mechanical specialist, Jeffrey Tierano from Derry, New Hampshire, as a mechanical specialist. And again, I would request that you waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Jeffrey Tierano to the DPW Mechanical Specialist.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you. Couple items on my update sheet for you. One is the Mystic School update. You have it elsewhere on your agenda. There's a supporting document relative to that, since the building has come to you, to your care and custody through the most recent town meeting. So, I don't know if you want to get into that now or wait until later on your agenda?
I think let's wait until later on. Do we expect Nick this evening?
He was invited. I'm not sure if he'll make it or not.
Okay.
But he indicated that he probably would.
If he doesn't, we'll take it up at that time at any point.
The second item is that we have, in fact, seen a breakthrough on the Morocco Culvert project update, that there is a signed amendment and agreement to the, to the whole project. Our contractor on the project is now in the process of tying down a sub-agreement, an amendment, with the Keolis, who will perform the right-of-way work to enable the major project to begin. The right-of-way work includes some realignment of poles and other materials that are on the right-of-way. So, we're pretty excited that this is getting back on track. Mark had a job meeting, I believe it was today, with several of the people involved from White Construction, our engineer, and also, I believe, Keolis was on the call, and a couple officials from the MVTA. So, that feels pretty good, that that is actually moving forward.
Do we know when we're going to have an updated schedule from?
My hunch is, as soon as the subcontractor, if you will, has a timetable in place, I was thrilled that, that seems to be moving as fast as it was. My, my fear was that that would cause additional delay. We'll know that pretty shortly, pretty soon, as that interaction between White and Keolis becomes solid, we'll have a better sense. It's all dependent on that Keolis timeline of doing the right-of-way work, which shouldn't be affected by the weather unless it's dramatic, snow and ice. They should be able to do what they need to do in the coming weeks, so, in a couple of months, if need be. So, as soon as we get that, we'll get it for you.
So, one thing we owe the Winchester Soccer Club is, you know, a walkthrough, I think, and some overview of the schedule.
Yep.
So, that work. And to the extent that we think Keolis' work on that right-of-way will not impact the soccer club, just it'll be adjacent. But we owe them that. And that's, you know, if that's Mark, you, myself, whoever wishes to attend, but we certainly promised that. And it didn't make a lot of sense to do a walkthrough without saying, you know, someday soon, the work will begin. But it sounds like it's sooner than it was in August, so that's good news.
It's a major, it's a major breakthrough, thanks to our, everybody involved, particularly our legislators, who assisted with the process. And so, we were able to finally get this thing moving. So, it was, it was a team effort. We had a couple grant award notifications. One, I think you heard at town meeting regarding we're a climate leader community. The Green Community's a vision of the Department of Energy Resources certified us as to be eligible for up to $150,000 to fund technical studies necessary to design municipal clean energy projects, and up to 1 million via decarbonization accelerated grants to support project implementation. So, that's a huge plus for the community. They, everybody should be pretty pleased with that one. The town has also received a technical assistance grant from Massachusetts Downtown Initiative to support the downtown Winchester placemaking and wayfinding implementation pro, project. Grant includes up to $30,000 in consulting services for this project. It relates to signage and related, issues related to signage in the, in the downtown project area, so.
And I think that-
So, a climate leader, yeah.
Just want to tell a little climate, then, wayfinding. Go ahead.
So, climate leader, obviously terrific, terrific outcome. I think we're in the very first set of communities. And, you know, this body, school committee, town meeting, a lot of people voted on pieces of that, but our Climate Action Advisory Committee and our Sustainability Manager really led us on that. So, huge credit to them. I did have a conversation with a couple of them last week. I shared this at State of the Town, which is we, it's, it's a million dollars in three-year cycles. And there's a cycle in 2026 that we want to get into, which would require us to, to have a project at Springtown Meeting, so we don't squander that cycle. Because then, it's just into the next one. And Town Hall HVAC is a great project. There could be others. But I would, I would, I would, you know, really recommend that between our staff, town managers, office and engineering, and capital planning, you know, we find, maybe it's Town Hall HVAC, but we, we don't have certainty around funding there, so maybe a smaller project as well, so that we have something at Springtown Meeting to make sure we can put a project in the queue here. Because we obviously want to be able to submit something that has a large decarb potential to avail ourselves of this first million-dollar cycle, which, which expires next, I believe, next August. So, that's just a, a comment for, for you, Steve.
Would our solar arrays count, I would think? The ones that we talked about at Fall Town Meeting?
It's a good question. I don't know.
So, do we expect Ken to sort of be on point, potentially?
Ken, Town Manager's Office, because I think he'll need help from engineering and DPW.
Yep.
So, I think, I think it, it comes from Ken, but I think it has to, and this is where I'm saying it for, you know, for Steve, and hopefully the board agrees with this, that kind of rounding the, the wagons on this one to make sure we have a, you know, maybe a big project, maybe a smaller project, that we're sure we can fund, because we don't want to lose this first shot. Because it's just gone then.
Right. And it needs to be somewhat shovel-ready, is what it sounds like as well. Has to be expended.
But we have, but we have the $150,000 that we can, I think, pull now-
Into it.
-to help us get it shovel-ready in the next, because we have until August, I believe. So, but Ken, Ken has all the details. But if we have nine or 10 months, that 150 can help us get there, so.
Okay. Bill, do you have a question on the wayfinding?
Yeah, nothing important.
Okay.
I was just gonna, the wayfinding, is that the Rotary? Or is, is that accurate?
I'm not entirely sure. It's-
Is that something different?
It's downtown. I'm not entirely sure if it's-
I'm not positive, but I was told it's in that area.
Okay.
And I think Planning Board is on point. So, heads up for the Select Board, that we had a meeting with the Waterfield developers last week, I think. And we're going to need to have a joint. So, look for a schedule, sort of, a meeting sometime in December. Could be in this room, could be on Monday, could be off-cycle. But we have some parking to discuss on Waterfield Lot, and potentially local option on the Waterfield Development. So, talked with Taylor late last week after our meeting with Waterfield. So, just a heads up for the Select Board, that we're going to need to figure out some parking plans when that gets built, and that parking comes offline. And then, how does it come back on? Because it's Planning Board's building to approve, but it's our parking to enforce. So, we're going to have, get everybody caught up on what we heard and what we need to do. Probably have to take some action in the early part of the year. So, all right. Anything else on Steve's report?
No.
Okay. So, it's 7:43. I think we're right, going to be right into the public hearing. Before we do that, is anybody here for public comment on a topic that's not part of the agenda? Come on up, please.
Todd Gulick, 47 Everett Avenue.
Todd Gulick, 47 Everett Avenue.
Welcome, Todd.
Quick. I was here about five weeks ago, and shortly before that, met with Mr. Delaney and Mr. Too Good. Pardon me if I missed something in Wind Cam, but I viewed the meeting discussion about the Everett Avenue Culvert. And then, there was a short morning meeting that wasn't on Wind Cam. And then, there was a follow-up meeting in the evening that I watched the whole thing of. And at no time during what was accessible to me, did I understand the evolution from the board wanting this to move forward, to it recommending that it not be included in a warrant. I'm wondering if I could get just a summary of what happened and what the plan is moving forward to address the problem.
Okay. Would you like to follow up with Mr. Gulick offline?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to come in here?
Normally, we don't answer, but I think we have a pretty quick, quick answer for you, Mr. Gulick. So, we'll let the town manager give a quick update.
I think the short answer is, as you and I have discussed, there needs to be additional analysis of the flows to determine what is the proper scope of a project at that location.
Okay.
That was not done. And that, we've actually looked at options to get that done. And it was, to your point, that it, it really should be done, and I agreed with you. And that's kind of where we are. There hasn't been any action. We are actually active, looking to how to do that flow piece, to make sure it's included. So, it's back kind of toward the formative stage. And I'm happy to kind of keep you posted from there, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. I, this problem has been there for the entire time I've lived in Winchester, 32 years. I hope someone finally addresses it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else here for public comment? No. Okay. So, Mr. McGirl, would you like to come on up? Mr. Nowell, I think you're probably coming to as a Board of Assessors. We have our tax levy classification hearing, so we'll open that public hearing. Then, if anyone has questions on the tax levy, we'll invite those. Then, we'll close that portion. We have your memo in the packet, and thank you for the information on towns that classify, towns that don't, and your recommendation. So, if you'd like to maybe step us through the recommendation and-
The board doesn't make a recommendation. We just present the facts to you. It's your call. I'm just putting what we've done for the last 30-something years. We have such a small commercial group here in town, if you will. It's, doesn't seem really, I'd say it's not fair, but doesn't seem quite right. We don't get much of a savings. The idea of shifting the rate is to give people residentially a little more of a break. But the way it works here, it's, it's such a small, normal number. It's really not worth it, because you'd be saving roughly five cents on a residential tax bill, per, per thousand, and hitting the commercial 95 cents. So, it's, it's a big number. Just, that doesn't really work. They only did it once, way back in 1984, when Prop 2000 kind of just come out. So, it's not our call to recommend anything. It's simply yours. We prevent you with the, with the evidence. But if I could, if you're gonna, when you go to vote, if you vote for, when you vote, if you want to keep the same tax rate, vote for a residential factor of one. No, it's odd, because we have Chapter 110, so we actually do have two tax rates anyway. But it's, when you're voting this, it's a factor of one. Chapter 110 comes into effect. I believe we're the only community in the state that still does Chapter 110 with the water and sewer. So, your vote would be for a resident factor of one. And then, we, we've had discussion of resident exemption, that we're working to do that this year. No small commercial exemption. It's very similar to the residential one. And there is no open space here in town for us to tax at a different level. So, it'd be no action on residential exemption, senior exemption, and the open space discount.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McGirl?
On commercial, none. I, I agree with, with the view expressed. With regard to residential, we had talked about that. And so, you, you had suggested we, I appreciate the classification hearing is only once a year, but that we have that discussion with you kind of in, in March, is that right? Or April, for the, for the third quarter bill?
Yeah. If you're really serious about it, we could, we could talk about that and see what we have to do to promote it, have people apply. Because in this, in this town, we have about, we have about 7,000 people, maybe 6,800 people getting the exemption. We had spoken to Conquered, who done it most recently, and they're about half the size of Winchester. They didn't give them very much time to do it, which was very difficult for them, time, time-wise. Because you have to vote it at this here, you have to vote this here. You can't, you can't vote it any other time. You have to vote at this hearing for this fiscal year. So, if that's the case, we'd be kind of under the gun to get it done in one year. But I think we could do some things to get ahead of the schedule, if you will. But the problem is, we could come here next November, have done the work, and then, different board members change their vote, and we don't do the exemption. So, it's, you know, we'll do what we have to do. If you vote it, we'll do it. If, if not, we'll keep going where we are. But it's strictly your calling yet. And this comes from the power of legal, legal team. You have to vote at this hearing each year.
So, we would, you'd want us to give you a heads up in the spring, after the board is set for the year-
Yeah, sure.
-that there's still a, a majority to do it. And then, it would be then officially voted on at the November 26 hearing to take effect January 27.
Correct. Yeah. I can't do anything, you know, we talked before, but maybe somehow smoothing it in the first quarter of next year. That can't be done, because you have to take the vote.
Right. But most of the override, you said you might bump up the factor a bit. Most of the override would be implemented in the third and fourth quarters anyway?
The override or the-
If there's one that passes.
Well, no, that one I can change a little bit. I can put in for the first two quarters. I try to make it as even as I can, irregardless of values. But if I know things are going to go up, you know, 10%, I can put across the four quarters. So, there's no one big whack in the building.
And is that, is that a discussion you can have with us, of how you're smoothing the factors in?
Yeah. I don't even have to discuss it in a sense. I mean, in a sense, I do it almost every year, because there's always a little something changes. And I just do my best. If I figure I'm going up 4%, I try to bump the first quarter 1%, second quarter 1%, you know, that way. Change it a little, because you got to do that irregardless of your value. So, let's say you go up 10%, and George goes up 5%, and I like George. I don't know you yet. Maybe that'd be the difference. But in general, I'd do it across the board that way. So, it, it's smooth as we can.
Okay. Any other questions? It looks like he's thinking. I'm just not sure. Okay.
I'm thinking.
Okay, that's fine. Does the board want to discuss, actually, does anybody here from the public wants to weigh in on this topic, before we do some deliberation on the residential factor? Okay. So, does the board want to hold the residential factor at one and not shift anything onto commercial? Pretty consistent with 40 years. Okay.
What would happen if we stopped doing the 110 shift on water and sewer and just made the factors themselves the same? It would take money out of water and sewer and put it in the general fund?
Yeah, the water and sewer would then, we'd have to make up the difference, water and sewer rates would have to-
They'd come down on the commercial side, right?
They, they may, but residential would go up quite a bit. Because the $5 million Chapter 110 numbers, so you'd have to raise water and sewer rates quite a bit in the residential portion.
It's interesting, we're the only town that does that, though.
Yeah, it's kind of an artifact.
I said, at one point, there were two.
Yes.
Because the commercial rate looks visibly a little lower because of the water and sewer.
We get a lot of phone calls asking, is that right?
Seems like every year, we have that same question. But yes. So, does that change your opinion on the residential factor of one? Just wanted to ask. Okay.
Only, only in as much as at some point, we could maybe clean that up. Because it's, it would all be the same ultimately, if you, but probably too much math to do right now.
We have water coming in on December 1st. Matt, so, okay. Want to make a motion then on residential factor?
Move that we, move that we establish a residential factor of one, and that we take no action on the residential exemption, senior exemption, or the open space discount.
Is that a second, Mike?
Yes.
Any additional discussion or debate? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Paris, do you have one other question on residential or senior?
It was on CPA. So, just a, a couple of, of updates, because, you know, I know, obviously, George is a member of Town Meeting, and Dan, I don't know if you sat in on it. So, we did have some movement in the deferral program in terms of the income limits. That was approved veterans as well. And then, the other one was CPA, which was approved, I think, at Springtown Meeting 2024, for having a low-income senior tax exemption from it. They can be, I believe, fully exempt from the CPA 1.5% surcharge. That is not available. So, we've gotten that complaint, that there's no form to fill out or anything on the, on the website or information about it. So, we just need to implement that, because we've had, we've had some complaints around that. Because that was one of the, the pieces that Town Meeting accepted with local option.
Yep. Okay. So, maybe we can circle back and maybe for January 1. Looking for that? If we can?
Yeah, I hope so.
Yes.
Is that process similar to the process of getting the residential exemption in place too?
You have to provide gross receipts. So, it's a little bit more like the senior tax programs, because it's for certain income limits. So, you do have to provide your income.
And as soon as we can get people enrolled, it could be whether it's the January quarterly tax or the April quarterly tax. But as soon as we can get paperwork in, we can start to grant it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for assessors? Okay.
See you in March.
Thank you.
Maybe. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next up is public hearing on common victuals, wine, malts, and retail package goods store, Perse Stella LLC, doing business as Cafe Ducali, 959 Main Street. Good evening. And so, we'll listen to the applicant, and then we'll invite some public comment. And then, we'll close out all of our public hearings.
Hello, everybody. Philip Frateroli, 21 Old Village Drive. You might remember that I was here last year asking for a Chapter 12 restaurant license. I'm back, looking for a Chapter 15 package store license. This is something that's become possible over the last few years, to have both. And we, you know, from the beginning of this project, we were looking for a way to be able to sell beer and wine to folks who come and pick up pizzas and food to go. So, this is a better way to do it, the, the way that the to-go alcohol COVID kind of provisions were finalized in the state. They made it so that beer and wine were exempt from that. Cocktails would be allowed. We don't have, we're not asking for liquor licenses. We're asking for beer and wine. There would still be a way to do it if we opened the bottle of wine and put it in a plastic bag. We think it's cleaner to do it this way. So, we're here asking for a package store license. As you may know, I've been in the restaurant business for most of my life. I've had liquor licenses under my, my name as a manager for 16 years, and a pretty clean record. And I think there's a pretty, pretty clear need in town for something like this, as evidenced by all the letters of support that I've reprinted, in case anyone wants to look at those.
Thank you. So, this evening, we have both liquor license and the common victuals license on our agenda. We'll take those up, I think, as, as separate topics. But before, actually, yeah, before I ask, we ask Mr. Frateroli anything. Would anyone from the public like to comment? Come on up.
This is one from the board.
You could state your name. I'll start here.
Sure. I just have a statement. It's included in there, or a little-
Okay.
... page. Good evening, Select Board members. My name is Michael DeRozan. I'm a resident and property owner of 961 Main Street in Winchester. My property directly abuts 959 Main Street. I am here to respectfully oppose the issuance of an onsite beer and wine license to the future Cafe Ducali. My opposition is rooted in what I can only describe as a bait and switch in the evolution of this project, as I have stated before. When I was first approached by Mr. Philip Frateroli, he stated that his intention was to renovate the building for warehouse and storage use to support his existing businesses. Later, he explained that the space would be used for pasta, baked goods, and bread production. In a third conversation, the plan shifted again, this time to a cafe bakery on the second floor, and the basement to be used as a bakery, just apply his restaurants. Throughout these changing narratives, the consistent representation from Mr. Frateroli was that the business would be a cafe bakery selling coffee and baked goods, something I supported. As a resident and property owner, I welcome reasonable improvements, and I believe that successful, well-run businesses benefit the Winchester community. Now, for a fourth time, I find myself in front of the Select Board or a planning committee to address another change in Mr. Frateroli's plan, to turn Cafe Ducali into a full-service bar and restaurant. In a recent Boston Globe article, Mr. Frateroli stated his intention to serve lunch and dinner service, including pizza and meal, as well as pizza, pasta, and painting classes, which clearly exceeds the permitted scope of a cafe bakery. Now, Mr. Frateroli wants to add an onsite beer and wine license. A full, a full-service restaurant with extended after-hour events, liquor service, and increased seating introduces far greater impacts to the neighborhood, including increased vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic, parking strings, noise, and overall disturbances. These impacts were never disclosed, discussed, or approved by the zoning committee. For these reasons, I strongly oppose the issuance of an onsite beer and wine cafe, or license to Cafe Ducali. The approval would effectively sanction a shift from a small cafe bakery to a bar operation, contrary to what was presented to neighbors and to the town, and contrary to what was formally approved. Additionally, the town should not be issuing additional liquor license to a business, to businesses, without a designated alcohol beverage control commission enforcement officer. Thank you for your time and consideration of my concerns. I respectfully ask the board to uphold the original conditions and scope of the project and deny the request. Respectfully, Mike DeRozan.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin McGee. I'm also a Winchester resident, but I am also a condo owner at 955 Main Street, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of that condo association. The board has voted unanimously to present to the board our opposition to the current request on the part of Mr. Frateroli to again change what we understood, very similar to what you just heard, was the original intent, and now has changed what we would consider the mission pre, and what this particular building is going to be used at. The original contact that we had from Mr. Frateroli was back in November of 2022, just before the ZBA meeting, at which he was ultimately awarded a special permit, which was required in order for him to proceed with both the build-out and the operation of the specific business that he was asking for. The ZBA terms and conditions, order of conditions that were presented when they approved that, said that it was approved for use as a cafe bakery, and that that was one of two requirements requiring a special permit. The other was that the building itself was non-conforming. As part of the approval, the order of conditions stipulated that the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And additionally, that they would, they, that he would be required to work with the neighbors regarding parking concerns. Initially, we were sent plans- Initially, we were sent plans a day before the ZBA meeting, which showed what reported to be the plans that were going to be submitted for the special permit. Those plans on the upper floor showed essentially a kitchen area that didn't show any specifics. It showed a petition between that kitchen plan in the rear of the building and in the front of the building, it simply showed a counter. No seating or anything else along those lines, and also no public restrooms. The basement showed coolers, storage, work tables, preparation tables, mixers, all kinds of things that you need for a bakery. We assumed that those were the plans that were submitted to the ZBA and upon which his permit was granted. We didn't hear anything else until April and then May and June of 2024, at which time we were again contacted by the proponent and asked if we would consider granting him an easement so that he could have Eversource install a pole with three single-phase transformers and high-voltage equipment on the top of it that would then serve a 600-a.m. service that would be required in order for him to operate all the equipment that was going to be installed in the building. We met with him, we said that we supported what he was doing up to that point and we would be happy to try to accommodate him, but that we were concerned for two things. One was ultimately parking, and the second thing in terms of the easement was that we would be granting a permanent use of our property for the installation by Eversource.
So I think that as it relates to private property and utilities, I'm not sure that we have any role in that, but if this.
I'm not saying that to do, what I'm saying, I understand that, but this is, what I'm trying to say is, this is what has happened since then. Ultimately, we tried to work with him on that. The one thing that we asked for was that he compensate us for any costs that we incurred in the legal cost of trying to negotiate the easement request with Eversource himself. He refused to do that.
So.
We terminated the conversation.
I'm gonna ask one, this is.
We haven't heard anything from him.
So there, there is, okay, so I don't know how much more you have on specifically the liquor license, but one thing that's changed that's materially different for both of you with public comment is Fall Town Meeting, November 2024, approved rezoning of North Main Street. Restaurants are allowed by right. So any business owner who may have said they wanted to have a bakery or a dog cleaning business or a hair salon can now put a restaurant in that space. And the ZBA permit is no, they're no longer the permit granting authority.
That's not what our council said, though. Our council said, yes, they are still around.
So the.
Planning Board doesn't agree, so I'll read Brian's.
The critique from the Butters is that the ask from the applicant exceeds the ZBA's letter, right? They have certain hours.
Conditions.
Conditions. So it's a narrow question of whether these hours still bind us or not. Planning Board says they don't.
Planning Board says they do not, and Planning Board says they supersede ZBA.
Right.
Town Council on his cellphone this afternoon says he may need to go before ZBA to have it vacated, but Planning Board does not agree, I can read the chair's opinion.
But our authority here is liquor. We're supposed to decide whether we believe this applicant and this location is appropriate for packaged and poured liquor. That is the question for us.
We also have a common victuals license which has hours in front of us, so if there's any question on hours, we, we can choose to not vote that this evening, but we do have.
Are we still hearing from Mr. McGee or are we?
I'll look back at Mr. McGee in a second, fair enough.
We've forgotten the conversation up to this point, I appreciate your comments. We do have issues with the hours, that's the second concern that we have. Everything up until this point, including your granting of the pour liquor license a year ago, basically required the five o'clock closing time. That was originally in the ZBA order of conditions. There was a question at that point as to whether, apparently his application for the pour liquor license said a six o'clock closing, you specifically referred to in the minutes of that meeting.
Yes.
The fact that it was a ZBA requirement for five. Now he's asking for ten. The fact of the matter is, there is only street parking and in a previous concern that was issued, the license conditions was to put up no parking signs around the intersection of Russell Road and Main Street, which further limits street parking. I have no idea if that's been done, I haven't checked to find out, but that was part of the requirement that was in the September 23rd, 2024, Select Board Meeting. And it basically said that the hours should be six o'clock, should be five o'clock closing and that there should be parking signs put up at the Russell Road intersections to limit the parking on the street. At the end of the day, with the change in the use of that building, it is now our concern that if our limited parking, and we have limited parking, which is why we rent the space for the town-owned portion of our parking lot at the rear of it, and that parking lot is full during the days. However, once it comes after, after the evening hours, then that's going to stop people from parking in our parking lot, which means that we then have increased liability for anything that happens for somebody that is using his. They're not going to be in our building, they're going to be in the adjacent building. Slips and falls and everything else is going to be our problem. So that is essentially what our concern is, closing hour at 10 o'clock and the vicarious liability that we will inherit.
So private parking to be enforced by you as the property owner is something that you will need to enforce as the property owners of 955?
In other words, we should be able to, we know we can tow people.
Of course.
Okay, but so that's.
But the Select Board will not be engaging in that enforcement action, it's not a town, street.
We're not asking you to, what we're saying is that by allowing this to happen, you are forcing us into the position where if we want to protect our interest, the only way we can do that is to enforce by towing cars that are in our parking lot illegally at night.
You're making the argument that it's negative impact upon the Butters, of the permanent applicant.
Absolutely, it's a negative impact, not only on us, but we have the main parking lot right adjacent to his building.
Okay, even if they have a potential solution, it's something that we, oftentimes, we have to consider, but because we haven't been given any advice by council as to what the elements are for granting a special permit, so a little worried.
So we can, I think we can discuss, any other public comment on this? So I think we can take up the hours potentially separately and just continue this hearing as relates to the victuals license and the hours once we understand jurisdiction of Planning Board or ZBA. But this board, I think without Paris, but with John Fallon, did grant a pouring license with a closure time of five o'clock a year ago. So if parking impacts were okay at five o'clock, the adverse impact on the neighbors, perhaps, or, you know, it's a sort of window of mitigation, but we can certainly vote on liquor licenses. We've done so once now, so there's an approved pour license, there's a request to have a takeaway retail license, similar to what we had with Nouvel Maison. I think as relates to the hours of operation, the Planning Board Chair would say that the zoning changes make it a restaurant by right. Nothing in the bylaw of the Planning Board dictates how the hours, the hours of operation. So Planning Board cannot specify the hours of operation and the ZBA is no longer the special granting authority for that location. So that's the Planning Board Chair, he's not the planner. But we can try to have that narrow question answered by Town Council so that we understand if that ZBA ruling has any merit at the present time with the zoning change that's in place. Because the bylaw does not specify hours, that would fall to us.
Can I speak on the hours for a second?
You may.
So in terms of the hours, a lot has changed in the last year, especially in that area. One, the zoning changed, now that anybody who opens in the space across the street from us can open a restaurant through, you're right, the MSMD doesn't require hours, but in the central business zone by law, it says customary business hours. And clearly, five o'clock is not a customary business closing time. You know, our, our business in terms of the operating offerings is exactly the same as we offered to the Health Department back in 2023. We've always had pizza on, on the menu. Since the Rocio family closed Gloria's Pizza and since what's happened to that, that business in the, in the last year has taken place, our business plan has developed and we want to be able to offer pizza later on into the early evening so that, so people have options to eat safe pizza in town. Businesses develop, I mean, what we offer on day one is not going to be what we offer two weeks in. We're going to have to evolve as, as we go and that's customary and ordinary in how a business operates.
Can I make a follow-up comment before you vote?
I'll let you have one more comment and then I'm gonna actually, then we'll just deliberate, I think. Go ahead.
There are plenty of pizza options in Winchester, I think we can all agree upon that. My main concern is that we're going to put a bar next to a family residential neighborhood.
There's no bar.
I am speaking.
No, there's no bar, you can't.
No, he is speaking, though, Phil. It's incredibly rude to interrupt another person who's trying to make a presentation. You had your time.
Misrepresenting my business.
He has his turn to speak and you need to let him.
Mr. Frateroli is putting a bar in a residential neighborhood. It abuts it, it is going to affect a lot of people. People continue to come to me in the neighborhood asking, what is happening here? They don't know, they're unsure, they do not want a bar. I understand people are not here. I cannot speak for people's agendas and whether they're here or not, but I do recommend that you consider that there are families right here. We're going to have to deal with the outpouring of people at 10 o'clock while our children are trying to sleep. That's all I have to say.
Okay. And there, there are restaurants, Nouvel Maison can now pour alcohol. We have, Restaurant de Serena is across the street from residences and apartments. They're all, they're all throughout our town, and North Main Street will probably have more of them, so I appreciate it. But I think it's just a half a block down the, down the road is Restaurant de Serena, which has seating and alcohol, and I don't know what their hours are, so. Select Board, any additional questions for the petitioner?
So, do we have? In terms of your other restaurants, so I know that parking is an issue. I think a lot of other restaurants also are not.
I don't think there's any restaurants in Winchester that have a parking lot.
Gloria's. It's not open, I mean, but I think that might be the exception.
Yeah, I mean, KF has a capacity of 300, we don't have any private parking. There, we opened a restaurant in East Boston that's next to a condo association on both sides. That was the concern when we opened that restaurant, that people were going to park there. In eight years, nobody's ever parked there, you can put signs up, and people aren't going to park where they're afraid they're going to get towed. Especially at night, there's ample parking all the way down Main Street.
I, I agree with that.
Okay. So, Mike, any questions?
No, you know, I, I think that the reality here is that we are going to see some changes in this area along Main Street and that was by design by the Planning Board, by Town Meeting. And we know of quite a bit of changes that are happening in the near future, and so this is one of them. This was kind of an intended outcome. I'm sympathetic to the Butters and the neighborhood there, but also knowing the Fraterolis and how they conduct their business, they've been a great partner with the town and I think if there are problems, that they will be resolved by the business owner before they come to us, right? So we're not going to be an enforcement authority here. So, you know, we'll, so I'm, you know, I would certainly support the request. The hours, I think, is, you know, is another, is another question, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm going to recommend we split the votes into the Cordials Retail, the two alcohol licenses, and potentially defer the hours until we have some clarity from legal as to what the authorities.
I want everyone to feel, sorry, Anne, you were going to speak.
No, I'm just looking at, and it might be different as printed, but it, on it, it says the hours during which alcoholic beverages may be sold are, and that is correct.
That's the point you're raising, right? In terms of how it interacts with the ZBA application, is primarily the hours?
So I've worked on matters where there has been changes in zoning. And if, if a property gets a special permit under prior zoning, that permit has still applied, even after they've redistricted and rezoned and changed things.
But the part.
So I'm not done, please, let me finish. So here, I think there's multiple issues that need to be answered by council. One is the continued application of the ZBA decision. Even though it's been rezoned, that doesn't mean necessarily that the ZBA conditions are now mooted. These could still be pending and enforceable against this property unless and until Mr. Frateroli applies for a revision of the special conditions, which is a thing I've seen done many times in similar situations. On top of that is the fact that the question of introducing a pouring license, is that a material change in the use? Because the initial special permit was a use permit. And if the use is changing in a material fashion, that might also need to be reconsidered by the initial permit granting authority. Mr. Frateroli might then have two different ways to solve this problem. Go back to the ZBA and have the ZBA reconsider and revise the conditions that they imposed upon the property, or he reapply for a brand-new permit under the current zoning laws, which would go to the Planning Board. And either way, that resolves all of these questions. And until I have the answers to them, I'm not comfortable doing anything beyond what we've already done in the past because that was within, not only my zone of comfort, but what was fully vetted by legal counsel. And here, it seems like we've got a couple of different answers, a couple conflicting views, and I want to make sure that the North Main Street zoning, rezoning goes forward without these sort of ambiguities. And unfortunately for Mr. Frateroli, you might just be subject to having been a little too fast trying to get this permit when you did, but it's, let me finish, Phil. As far as I'm concerned, the law is the law and the process is the process and it has to be followed. And that's even more important when we are beginning to strike out to rebuild this area of town. We gotta do it right.
So I appreciate everything Bill just said. I think the easiest thing is for, it sounds like what Jay is saying is you need to go vacate the ZBA permit. I wasn't on this topic.
No, he said he has to go back before the Planning Board, actually. And the Planning Board could host within four weeks.
I, I don't, I don't want to shortcut the process here. I'm, I am supportive of moving forward with this, I would like to follow. If, if the process is you need to go in front of the Planning Board, I would just ask you to do that and get the by right approval under the, the Main Street multi-use district.
For the change of hours?
I guess it's two things, it's a change of use and it's a change of hours. It's, it's, I, I hear what you're saying.
In terms of the change of use, so under the MSMD, coffee shop, bakery, cafe, coffee baked goods, pizza is a baked good, and light meals, it's going to be a light meal for onsite or takeout consumption.
Maybe it's not a change of use.
I don't think that's a change of use, I mean, that's exactly.
That's a discussion for the Planning Board.
But you have, you currently have conditions set upon your property and there have been disputes as to what a cafe bakery meant. That's why you came to us before, because there were authorities in Town Hall that said that did not extend to selling liquor just in bottles, not even serving.
Not selling things retail.
Exactly, exactly.
Correct.
And taking, yes, but now you're going another step, you know, is a cafe bakery, does that use include open pour? And I don't know the answer to that and it's something that we should certainly know the answer to.
I, I, I think it's not going to be very hard for you to go to the Planning Board and get this. Like, I'm just going to suggest that, if they were given the Main Street, or the Town Meeting gave them the zoning liberalization. So I think if, if that, I think would address the points you raised, Bill.
It, it could, I mean, I don't know if the Planning Board can or needs to vacate the ZBA.
So it just sounds like we need a clear answer from council of what, what you would need to do in order to clear up the confusion around the transition to the new district.
So, so when I look, when I look at the project, I'm. I'm very supportive of it. I think this part of town desperately needs it. I live in Precinct Date. I go to that office all the time for medical services. My daughter goes daycare across the street. I'm in that area all the time, almost every day. This area needs this project. I think it does a lot of good. I think there's a lot of parking on the street. And everyone I talk to in Precinct Date says the same thing, and they're waiting for it to open. So I'm supportive of the project. I think clearing up some of this paperwork, I, I know it's another few weeks. I would, I think that's the right way.
Do I have to notify the neighbors? Because the nature of that condo building, it costs like $900 every time I have to come in front of a.
You, you might have to. If that's what law requires, you have to do it, Phil. Like, that's just the way these things work.
Can we continue our hearing? Because the notification is for the license.
We would, I would, I would continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing, and he wouldn't have to.
Correct. I would, I was planning to continue the hearing, not close it. Our public hearing, correct, on this topic.
He, he's asking, does he have to notice a new hearing for the sake of a planning board, reissuance or revision, or, or whatever it might be?
It's actually, I'm not asking the planning board for anything, because everything's already existing.
You're, you're asking if you comply with the new overlay district.
Restaurant, it's allowed by right.
Yep.
I have the planning board chair like texting me.
What's town council's view here that we need to vacate this?
I'm not sure the town, town council's not available. We couldn't dial him in. Let's get our answers, and we will continue this hearing. And let's try to get you an answer in the next two days as to whether or not planning board has any bearing on this, given that it's allowed by right.
If you speak, I would like town council to give us a written opinion on this, because this is something I am confident will come up again.
If this is gonna be a continued hearing and a continued issue, maybe directing this to Karis and Murphy as well?
Yeah.
Second to that.
I will do that.
Yeah, because our next meeting isn't until December.
Correct.
So the question is, is specifically, does, does the applicant need to do anything about the ZBA opinion?
Correct. Go before the ZBA to vacate it. Does it still hold?
Again, that's not asking them for affirmative. That's to remove something that's on the record, so.
Mm-hmm. It happens all the time.
Correct.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be the first.
We can still vote conditional on the, you know.
I don't think people are prepared to vote that tonight. Are people prepared to vote conditional on that clarification, or we want to just take it up the next instance of this public hearing?
We'll, we'll meet on the first. I think we'll have this cleared up before that. We'll meet on Friday, too, if it's cleared up with a decision that this is under the planning board and nothing has happened, we can, sooner than that.
I, I appreciate the concern Bill's raising, which is, we don't want to end up in a world where, for some, whatever legal technicality, the ZBA opinion is still alive. So, let's just clear it up.
I understand in places where the, the zoning changed, but this was upzoned. So it's not as if something that was allowed.
Is disallowed.
Would be disallowed. This is adding more rights to the property.
I think that's a very logical argument. I think, like, as a, as a board, we, it would just be helpful to have town council tell us that.
Does ZBA always operate on logical arguments?
Uh, no. That's, that's why we have to be careful about these things.
I don't think this is a long delay. I don't think this is a long delay.
No, no, no. Do you have a timeline for opening right now?
No, no, I just.
It was over a year ago.
If I can avoid having to pay almost $1,000 every time I come here, I'd like to do that, but.
We're continuing our hearing. It sounds like the planning board is not a hearing. It's just a clarification from town council.
Yep.
So there's no hearing there, if that's what you're asking.
Unless they do need to have a hearing.
Unless they do need to have a hearing, which would be their decision.
To violate the prior conditions.
ZBA.
Yeah.
Okay. Lack of closure, but we'll try to get to that on December 1st.
We just like to see you, Phil, so that's.
It's not even the money. It's like going in and having the lady look at me when I have to put, like, all these stickers. It's really not, not fun.
All right, so we'll continue the hearing.
Please talk to the Butters, though, and get, it, it seems like there's still confusion as to what you're doing. And it would be a lot easier for us if everybody was supportive. It's a great project. I think it's gonna be good. But I think Mr. De Siro, De Siroto?
De Rosa.
De Rosa, yeah. If he thinks there's gonna be a bar there, and there's not gonna be a bar there, that's a very easy thing for you guys to get on the same page about. If you're just serving cordials with coffee, that's very different. And we can probably have a more friendly hearing about this.
Okay. All right, so, I'm gonna close the public hearing relative to the tax levy and continue.
No, no, I, that's not what it is, though, right?
The public hearing on the license.
Doesn't matter.
All right. Let's get to our business agenda. So, we have two applicants for the permanent street tree committee in attendance this evening. We'll take up Susan Fagerstrom and Philip Tegmark. The other applicants, Julia Osborne, Austin Whitman, and Prasita Kalabi will be present on December 1st. It sounds like they've been confirmed. So, so just so you both know, we're going to have you come up one at a time and present, and then we will not take a vote to fill the seats until we've met all of the candidates on December 1st. Though you don't, don't necessarily need to come back on December 1st. You could watch us on Wincam, but just so you know that we're not gonna have closure this evening. But if you want to come up first, Ms. Fagerstrom, come on up and get ready, Mr. Tegmark. So, good evening.
Good evening. I'm not sure what the process is, but.
Generally, who you are, where you live, and why you wish to serve in the committee, we have your application, we have your resume, your statement of interest, but anything else you want to share about yourself or your experience?
Sure, sure. My name is Susan Fagerstrom. I've been a resident of Winchester since 1999. I live at 43 Lorena Road, and, and have been very interested in trees, but now I would say I'm passionate about trees. So, one of the reasons why I, and I've, I noticed in Winchester news that the street tree committee was looking for new members. So I contacted the chairman at that time last spring, David Miller, and he graciously added me to the committee. So I've been attending the meetings as a non-voting member of the street tree committee, and I'd love to continue in whatever capacity you guys see fit. A couple of the reasons is that I understand the value of trees. I've been noticing that we've been declining here in Winchester. I mean, it's great for shade, it's great for the climate, it's great for the beauty of the town. I am interested in the trees themselves, the inventory, helping to raise money for an endowment. My professional work was with endowments and as a business developer, so I've done a lot of presentations. But more importantly, living on Lorena, and I moved from, I moved from, spacing out on the first street, I lived for the first five years of my life in Winchester, and then moved in 2005 to Lorena, which is very treeed. And I'm a gardener, and so, of course, I have no sunny spot, and would love some sunny spots. But over time, I have so appreciated the shade, that I think a lot of the developers on Lorena, while I watched them take down trees, you can take a tree down in 15 minutes and you grow it for hundreds of years. And my property has better grass, less, more drought protection because of its shade. And it's been a growing recognition of this. And so, part of my interest is actually to be a town educator on the whole town, and just get people to understand the value that I've grown to appreciate over time. So I've sort of given up on all that sun and all that grass, and I've grown to be such an appreciator of the shade and what the trees can offer. And I'm really happy to help people grow like I have grown, gently, because I think people need to come along and need to understand the value of the trees we have in town. And, you know, I'm willing to walk that walk with them, because I've walked it since I moved to my property in 2005.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Wander, too. I, I saw you, you were involved in the Fast Force effort. I mean, you've already kind of put your money where your.
Right. And, and I know Presida is applying. And, you know, honestly, I'm willing to work on the street tree committee if you give me a vote or not. I'll still be helpful. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 I mean.
I think she's wonderful.
You've already demonstrated, I think, the fact that you're committed to this, and that you coordinated with Eversource to hook up solar panels also demonstrates that you don't give up easily, because, I mean, you know, it doesn't happen as quickly as we want. Did we get it done, by the way? Did Eversource hook up Lynch?
At Lynch? Let me check somebody.
I will tell you that that effort took me a very long time and a lot of dedication, but it, you know, you can make it happen, but it takes a lot.
That, so I don't have a question. I'm just congratulating you, because if you have the patience and determination to get Eversource to do something, then I'm confident you're gonna do something good with getting, getting more trees in our town, which is definitely needed.
I know. And I know it takes patience, because Eversource did, and it can happen.
Yes.
And, and by the way, I've been tending the Ginfield Garden, which I actually designed, and I just privately go tend it all the time. It doesn't have a sign. I have been working with TPW for many, many years, but I think I made progress. It had a sign, and then it got stolen, and I'm trying to get a replacement.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're working on it, but I know it take, I know these things take time. So, the other part of the street tree committee is working with TPW, so I understand that.
Thank you, thank you for all the work and volunteerism and gardening prowess.
Yeah, that's okay. And as I said, I think you, if you have great applicants, I'm buying whichever way you guys decide.
Thank you. Well, we won't be deciding this evening, but thank you for coming.
No problem.
All right. Next up, Philip Tegmark.
Also my first time doing this, so, I don't know. Do I speak in the microphone, or no?
It should pick you up generally, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. Hi, I'm Philip Tegmark. Live at 23 North Gateway. So, my fam, I don't know, my family moved here when I was five, and then I've just grown up here, and then went to college, and I'm working, doing cybersecurity stuff up in Uber, but still live here. Yeah, I'm interested in, like, getting more involved in my local community. And so, like, I'm interested in the, the street tree committee specifically, because, like, gardening's been a longtime hobby of mine, and more recently, like, foraging and plant identification. So it seemed like it would be an interest, seems like it would be a fun thing to do. I don't know, I don't have much of a spiel prepared beyond that, but.
Have you attended any of the meetings of the tree committee?
I have not. Are they open to the public, or?
They are.
Okay. Do they have, like, a schedule somewhere, or?
Yep, they'd be noticed on the calendar, so it's probably about once a month. It's not, it's not like every, every other week, like, we meet. So they're just an expectation of, you know, availability, because, so I would make sure you sort of have the time for that. I think you probably do. And there are some sitting members, and we're looking to do some out-large members. So, anything else you want to share with us about trees or nature or your interests?
I don't know. I think it'd be cool to have more trees, more fruit trees potentially. I don't know.
Okay.
Or just work on, like, other, I'd also be down to just help out people with whatever they're currently working on, learn more about it.
Great.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
What's a pirate certificate?
Yeah, that's my question, too.
Okay, so MIT, where I went for college, they have a physical education requirement. So to satisfy it, if it takes, like, four physical education classes and pass the swim test. And so, one way you could do that is by taking beginner archery, beginner sailing, beginner, one of the fencing classes, and either pistol or rifle. And if you do those things and pass the swim test, they give you a pirate certificate. So, that's what I did.
It's actually pretty great.
I love that you wrote it on your CV without any explanation.
It's probably has to be, like, the greatest thing to have in your resume for an interview, though, because people are, like, I'm trying to know it.
My mom was like, you need to get it before you graduate.
Love it. Okay.
So, can I ask, in terms of, back, back to trees, if you were to join the committee, what's sort of one initiative that you might like to take under your wing, or something that, you just mentioned fruit tree, is something that would be sort of a passion area that you would sort of help steer the committee in?
Um, I mean, what I think, I guess two things. So, what I think would be cool, but like, not knowing too much about, not having much experience with the committee, would be like, I think it'd be cool if we planted more, like, native fruit trees in Winchester. But also, like, being new, I'd probably be most interested, at least initially, in just working on stuff that other people are already working on, just helping with that. I also find that I'm just more motivated and productive when I'm working with other people on a shared task, so. At least initially, yeah, just help out.
I have a second question. In terms of your software expertise and computer science background, one of the things that was recently done by the, the street trees was a survey of. Tree canopy. So, you know, of all of the trees that we have. And I believe that's GIS.
GIS.
Do you have, does your sort of CS background include any GIS, or any sort of ways that you could think that that, you might be able to incorporate that background into sort of an existing GIS map of our trees?
Um, not GIS specifically, but like, I'd be down to help with that. Like, if there's any software side of that, I'm sure it wouldn't be too.
It's called tree plotter.
Tree plotter?
It's GIS-based. You should take a look at it. I'm sure they'd love some help with it.
Yeah, sure. I'd be down.
Be careful what you agree to.
Okay.
It's not wrong.
I see you, you were the bill director for the next hot prize at MIT, and you said that you co-lived construction of the house. Could you just give us an example of how you were able to wrangle up a bunch of college kids to actually get something done, given that randomly getting up a bunch of government volunteers isn't always easy either?
Oh, um, what did we do? I think, I don't know if college, maybe college kids are, I'm sorry, easier, probably easier to get. I mean, we offer, I guess you just offer, like, food, and you're like, hey, help us build. And then, I think we just offer basically free t-shirts, and also, like, if you helped build the house, then you would get, like, a guaranteed spot in, like, one of the runs, like, through the escape room. And that seemed to work pretty well. I don't know. I was mostly just helping with, like, coordinating, like, construction. Being like, here's what this wall looks like, cut these things to these dimensions, here's how you screw them together.
Okay. Thank you. Congrats on the pirate certificate as well.
Thank you.
So, as we mentioned, we'll take a vote on December 1st. You don't need to come back. You're welcome to. You're welcome to watch at home. And we will have, you know, five applicants for four positions, but we'll make that decision. And there'll be staggered terms. So some people will have a one-year term, then some will have two, and some will have three. So I would say whoever potentially doesn't get on, you know, perhaps in a year, there might be some openings. But, so, no decision tonight, so you don't need to stay, unless you wish to hear more about Fall Town Meeting and other things. But thank you for coming in, and thanks for your interest in volunteering. All right, great.
Thank you both.
So the next, we do have an applicant, an appointment, a reappointment for RiteLock Farms Board, which is, this would be his second term.
Move that we appoint David Juddson, Juddelson, to the RiteLock Farm Conservancy Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I vote yes. Motion passes. Next up, we'll take a Fall Town Meeting recap. If the town clerk and the moderator would like to come on up.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Steve.
Welcome back, Mr. Moderator.
With a different hat on.
Yes, different hat.
Yes. So, I don't know, Steve, if you want to tee this up, I know I have some thoughts, but do you want to tee this up, or do you want to have Mary Ellen tee it up?
I think Mary Ellen's probably got the best summary, and since she was on the point for all of the time there, so I would defer to Mary Ellen.
Sure. Do, do you want me to tell you a little bit about what we normally do, and then get into what challenges we had, or just kind of cut to the chase with the challenges?
So I think part of the, so just tables up for the board. I mean, I think Anthony and I, we discussed this in our meeting last week for agenda planning. It was, you know, generally, how can we problem-solve for the next town meeting, and what can we have in place in terms of, you know, readiness, infrastructure, do we have to make certain investments? That was the goal of this. But if we want to have other sort of review of Fall Town Meeting, or anything else we want to do for a debrief, that's the purpose of this conversation. So, do folks want to hear from Mary Ellen what we've done in the past, or do you want to cut to the chase?
I would.
It's just a quick, it's just a quick thing.
Personally, I would say cutting to the chase, but I also think it would be helpful for us to discuss town meeting content-wise as well.
Sure. Okay. Well, as you know, both on the 3rd and the 6th, we experienced many technical difficulties, and they were very varied on both dates and throughout the length of the meeting. What I did is I put out an email to the people involved, which is our Wincam, our IT internally here at Town Hall, the high school staff, and kind of assembled all of that technical feedback. And basically, what we are hearing from all the players involved is that there's a couple of things going on. We had competing interference on the same frequencies at the facility. So there's a 2.4 gigahertz.
Hertz, maybe?
And so, we need to really bring in an AV specialist that can assess the equipment prior to town meeting, and then keep someone like we did on the 3rd night, we hired an AV specialist. and then keep someone like we did on the third night. We hired an A V specialist to get us through the third night, which was successful. Um, to be able to determine where we're going in and access points with our equipment. Um, we have also learned that the microphones are wireless. We have a lot of wireless. It's all good when it works. But when there are multiple activities going on in the building at the same time, the access points are getting clogged up. And so we basically had a lot of traffic jams the other night. And, um, those H D M I switches were yet another avenue of challenge for us because they're fragile. They're built into stage left and stage right. And over the repetitive pulling in and out, not only for town meeting, but for the drama club, for the educational purposes, we need to determine on a more frequent basis whether that equipment is sturdy enough. So I think doing something where perhaps, um, if everyone's okay with it, you could sort of designate me to be the A V keeper coordinator facilitator in addition to the town clerk duties. But let me help to coordinate the team of I T and A V and private specialists. And then let me build a calendar that when I look at the two times a year that we meet, we're going to then break that down into how many weeks before that will we have an inspector come in and check the equipment? Then when will I build the schedule for all of those people in the team to meet and to test the equipment? We definitely should be testing it more than we were. We were relying on, um, pretty much doing it like a couple of nights before town meeting and even the evening of town meeting. And after talking to the players, it's best to bring in a specialist sort of quarterly. Let's assess if there's broken equipment. Let's get that remedied and kind of put out any potential fires as best we can by doing that inspection work ahead of time. And, um, we will need also a few more staffers. The town meeting's evolved. I mean, you've, you've all been involved in town meeting just over the last say five or six years. Many years ago, town meeting went very well in the sense that it was only the select board that used the projection. Everybody came up, read an oral report, said a few, few words, but we didn't have the complexities that are now expected in the environment. The town meeting members are younger, the technology is faster, and we have to meet that next generation where you are, which is you want PowerPoint presentations. You want to switch back and forth.
And it's the electronic voting too.
And stating of the electronic vote. So we now have three competing electronic situations where literally four years ago it didn't exist. So I do, I, I feel very heavy hearted about what happened in the sense that, you know, I take my job very seriously. And when things didn't go smoothly, um, I feel it's a very, you know, tough reflection on the town and you always want to put your best foot forward. Um, I think we do a good job remedying the situation. It's unfortunate it took two nights for that to happen. The other interesting point that one of the I T fellows said was when we test, and I haven't even told you this Phil, we need to spread out the test to cover as long as the length of the town meeting. So if we have a four hour town meeting and we're presenting right in the beginning, some PowerPoints and then we're not, we're talking and the mics are going mute. Then we're going back to the projection. We want to test that out so that we know we can manage the ebbs and the flows of the technology coming in and out of those access points. If that makes sense. And I not even know, I've sort of memorized this because I'm not a techie person by any means. But nevertheless, I will need to sort of hire some mic runners. I think it might be wise to, to wire the mics and then we can wire on the stands on the side and then potentially hire or get my National Honor Society students to volunteer, which is what I'm thinking of. We have that great program with the elections where I have the students come in and do the elections. So I'm thinking about maybe creatively coming up with something where we can save a little money on town meeting nights, get the community service, um, hours in for the students. But we will need money for the A V specialist. So I can put together a package, um, that will be for the F Y twenty-seven budget and then I'll need some kind of a FinCom transfer. If my monies don't tie out, I gotta take a look at the budget for F Y twenty-six.
Yeah, you'd need something for, for spring town meeting, right?
Yeah.
And special.
And we may have a special.
Yep, that's right.
Right? Yeah.
We may not have quite as many presentations perhaps, but.
Maybe a single presentation, a single vote.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we could even.
We could even do voice vote for a special meeting. Or a standing vote. Don't forget, you can always do standing votes. Um, so anyway, that's, that's sort of the big picture on it. I do feel very comfortable that I have my hands around what happened as much of why it happened. And then on top of it all, we also had like a volleyball tournament going on at the same time. So we had moms and dads filming their kids playing volleyball. So we had a lot of congestion on the video uh, with those access points. So the other thing that we're going to do, if you give me the authority to manage it all, um, I'm going to make sure that we don't have any scheduling conflicts either with the high school. So if they have something added in, we book our town meetings a year in advance. I never circle back. We never had a problem. Well, now we might need to circle back more frequently. So my staff would need to.
I mean, usually the, the high school athletic stuff will be over by the time we usually meet in the.
Well, you know what? Today, I don't know. I mean, but we've got to, we've got to have those conversations with the athletic department too. Because if we now have a state of the art gym here, folks, we just built that new gym, correct? So now it's compliant to the sports, uh, region, whatever they call them. Uh, and I'm sure they're going to be using it for a lot more, uh, events. So I want to make sure we don't have that conflict. Because I did take a quick look at potential other locations to do town meeting and we, I mean, the more auditorium, we just don't have any equipment over there. That would be like big money to, to build that up, to have WinCam there and freestream. So I think the high school.
Acoustics are not good there either.
Yeah, that's true.
That's the problem.
I, I, it's terrible that it happened, but I, we know what we need to do. Um, we want to continue to advance the technology as far as the presentations and getting people to be interested and involved and freestream it and all of that. So, um, if you give me a little bit of support on the budget and support on hiring some staff and getting consultants in, I think we can certainly remedy it.
And it wasn't terrible. Uh, you know, it didn't really have a substantive impact and, you know, these things happen. We've been talking about this for a while, right? So it's just now.
Well, I take it personally, I guess.
You shouldn't. I don't, I, I think it was a couple of things that went wrong with vendors and maybe some traffic stuff that we've been talking about handling anyways. And we've been just kind of like keeping, you know, just kind of like putting Band-Aids on things and trying to figure it out. But you're right, we have evolved. There is more of a demand. One of the questions I had for you too is, at, at one point, um, you were kind of running things from the, the back table there.
Yeah.
Um, is, is that an option for us? Because, you know, we have, uh, Matt or, you know, somebody from our, uh, staff that's usually kind of just jumping up and down and hitting, I mean, just seems like we can streamline that like kind of up and down and like somebody finding a file.
That's something I want to try to streamline, especially for the article one stuff, so that everybody's slides are just on one slide and you can just progress to the next slide.
Yeah.
Can be managed from the back of the room even without, you know.
It can. We, we, when we did remedy, Phil and I talked about that, it sort of solutioned what happened on the third night and that's where we brought Mike and we put him right down there on the floor. We can bring him back up to the stage and sort of, you know, put that behind the scenes, if you will.
And you probably know more than anybody because you're behind Chris Nixon probably have presented the most times.
Yes, yeah.
It, I think some folks especially like to have somebody there to help them like right here, click here. But in terms of finding files, we shouldn't have to do that anymore.
No, I've taken control of that. We've got a Dewey decimal system in the modern age. Mary Ellen is taking control.
One thought, yeah, one thought, so I agree with Mike. I, I wouldn't take any of it personally. I mean, I, I think in the scheme of the, of coming out of town meeting, nobody, nobody cited the tech issues at a complaint. They had plenty of complaints and that was.
Well, I did have a few emails. I did get a few emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
I might have sent one.
Oh, I think, I think the, the clicker cast, the, some people just not, you know, it didn't show up or it miscast. That was the one I heard a little bit about. I, I do think though that one idea is just, you know, the presentation deadlines will make your life a lot easier. I think if it's whatever you want to set.
Right.
If it's not, you know, if it's, um, five P M.
Right.
That evening, people will send you their presentations at five P M.
Exactly.
And, and that probably isn't fair to you. So if you send it either nine A M. that day or the night before.
Sure.
You know, there may be a rare exception, but I think, uh, uh, you know, people were just revising presentations because they could.
Right.
And I think just cutting that, cutting that off.
Yes.
For the record, I think we could use less PowerPoint presentations and more straight oral presentations. I think it's more persuasive that way and people pay more attention to the speaker. So if someone didn't meet the deadline, that's probably for the best.
In case we're wondering, Phil's aware?
That's true. One, one thing I will say in this, I didn't mention this to you yet, but when I was talking to the vendor on the electronic vote, I've been a busy woman today. There's a wireless base that we use to capture all the votes. And having that up on the stage, it's, it's quite sort of, um, I, I, I don't know what the word is, but the walls are, are very thick. There's interference. So they suggested perhaps bringing that down and we can fit that. It's a very small thing. But the town meeting members used to sit in the main part of the auditorium. And we did that back then because I would have to do a roll call vote or a standing vote and I'd have to know where are they. I didn't want to have to look all over the auditorium.
Yep.
So we kind of corralled everybody. We also had them sit by precinct. We don't have to force that issue now with the electronic. But the closer the people are to the wireless base, the more rapid that vote is going to get to the teller in the back.
It's easy.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we do need some support to get people to corral because most of the clickers, when people would come up to me and say it didn't register. And I know I pressed it. I know you did press it, but you were beyond way in the back, standing by the, the exit door. So we've got to do some educational, um, advice on that, um, I think as well.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the one thing I'm worried about is the votes. And I think, you know, from what they said, a little bit of the microphones were interfering because they're all the two point five, whatever. And then the same thing is like, there's a lot more people and we're encouraging people to download their, their documents on their iPads and stuff, but there's just so much more traffic than there was in the years past when people had their phones and, and iPads during the meeting.
That's right. And we, and we gave you all the handouts and so you'd have the paper to look through.
I mean, that would be my main comment to you is just working with, with whoever you're going to use for, for A V, but also working with the schools, um, to figure out what can be set up in terms of, you know, different networks and things. If it's, can we set up a network for the three, like for the duration of town meeting that our presenters and our materials could be on, that other people, um, that, that's, you know, separate from the guest network or, or separate from, different, because I think that's probably where, you know, when things are overloaded, then. And you can't tell people get off here.
I know.
Good luck to you with that. Um, yeah. So I, I think that might be a big, a big thing that can help is just lock it down.
We learned a lot and brainstormed quite a bit. Um, there's a lot of good talent in the existing team. So I think just having the coordination of someone, you know, like myself to sort of pull it together and to, to have those communications at various marking points. I think, you know, that alone with, uh, with the A V specialist reviewing and inspecting, I think will be okay.
I would support that idea of you being more the quarterback and, um, putting a little bit of budget against that.
I appreciate you guys stepping up for the third night to get the specialist in there. That really helped, uh, with, with.
I would loop in, oh, sorry, Michelle, Andrew Marion, if you're on already, you know.
He's one of the folks that helped give me quite a bit of information.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
If he needs like board support.
Yes.
Philip, he just left. If you need help in select board, I'm happy to be a liaison to that effort too. One thought on, Anthony mentioned about licenses. So the guest licenses, we hit a limit at some point. So I know I couldn't get on, but also with your A V, a hotspot, is that something that they could bring? So it's a separate, you know, it's a separate network for potentially V voter, potentially what the moderator's trying to do, um, for some redundancy. So that might get you not just speed, but you don't have as much interference. And that that's, if your A V person has a hotspot, if we purchase a hotspot, kind of, we have owls, right? We could have additional networks that exist, you know, that are portable. And then I think the other piece, which is more not technology, but just a general thought, I made some notes from the spring, which I'm happy to share with you, Mary Ellen and Philip offline, but just that whole run of show type thing, you know, not just, you know, deadlines and, and PowerPoints, but you know, who's coming and what and when. And not just, you know, tomorrow night, we'll take up articles this through that, which we all know when we leave, we got as far as Article eighteen, so we're going to pick up at nineteen. But who's ready and are they ready and just managing that so that we're not chasing folks down? I mean, not that we, people will say, I have to, you know, I'll be late. You have to take this out of order, but how can we just collectively, um, get all of the presenters and, and article proponents prepared in time so it's up on the screen, but also ready to speak and everyone knows that they're, you know, they're at a microphone that works. They're sitting somewhere where they can get to the microphone, like literally just the logistics of where the bodies are relative to the equipment, relative to the microphones. That'd be good too. Might be some assigned seating for folks, but that's not for, that's not a technology. It's more of a run of the show, but happy to chat.
So we're talking broad, more broadly.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry. We were talking about that since we've been teamed up. We've been talking about ways in which we can enhance that for sure. We're both sort of like minded about making sure that everybody is prepared. I think the other piece that we want to do is maybe even offer, we talked about training, is, is even offer like a little mock for these folks, you know, mock. I mean, I'm a public speaker. I've been doing it my whole career, right? And I was a debate kid in high school, but a lot of people can't, they get very nervous. And then when the mic doesn't go on, it's an automatic, oh my gosh, what's happening?
Yes.
So we could take that level down a little bit if we do some mock training and offer for people to come and, and do some public speaking classes with me and Phil in various times at the Winchester Room or something.
Do you want to talk beyond tech? Should we talk?
We can talk beyond tech and then I actually want to just make sure if there's any other investment select board ought to try to make beyond just the budget, but let's talk beyond tech and then let's wrap it up from.
Yeah, just a super quick comment. Sorry, Anthony, I know you want to say, but, um, I, 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 I think we expanded use of the consent agenda this time. I think that was good, right? We did, I think the O P A B and then the healthcare, the healthcare stabilization fund via consent. I think we could probably move.
Thanks for that.
Personnel board to it next time too, because personnel board was, was fairly long and, um, I, I think it was largely administrative.
Right.
So I, I would probably move that one next time too.
Well, that's like a collaborative thing, but mostly coming from the manager's office, but I'll make the new.
Yeah, that's kind of a
Yeah, we can.
Decision for each, you know, town meeting, right?
Right.
But I think we did use it more and I think I agree.
I think there's probably, that was the one article I think we could have, it had a bunch of motions, right? That I think we could have probably, um, we could have done and there, I think they were all unanimous, very administrative.
Yeah, a lot of unanimous votes, even in the spring.
So then any other questions on the meeting itself?
I was just going to actually, uh, second that suggestion of offering people a, a dry run.
Yeah.
I think even to say like.
It's good for your test.
Here's like Wednesday night ahead of.
We're going to do a hundred dollar.
The week before town meeting, you can come in and, you know.
School assembly.
Test it out. I, I think that is a nice offer. People may or may not take you up on it, but.
Sure.
It's always nice to have the opportunity to do a dry run.
I basically have only viewed town meeting in so many years of sort of the clerical aspects of what I'm doing and the post certification. But now that this has happened and we're kind of on the same page, I'm running this just like I run the elections.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way we got to do it. And our elections are flawless.
That's been the issue. There's so many like schools and V voter and WinCam. There's a lot of different fiefdoms, but I think Mary Ellen's got it.
Yep.
We'll get our hands around it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the last thing I'd want, select board. So Mary Ellen and, and Mr. Moderator, please keep us up to speed and, and Town Manager's Office. But if there's an investment that select board from our, you know, hospital gift account, you know, we, we've invested in things like baseball fences and other things. If there's a piece of equipment, not that we need our name on it, right? We have a sign out the side. We want our name, but there's like a.
Holographic.
If there's a piece of equipment and investment we can make, it's the select board's town meeting. It's our warrant. We call the meeting. So if there's a piece of equipment, you know, that's maybe different from your A V specialist and recurring, but I would think, I would like us as a body to consider, you know, we want to purchase that or we want to purchase the maintenance for that, or if we have to replace H D M I switches.
Right.
You know, maybe we do one and the schools do another one sometime, but, um, it's our town meeting and it's our warrant. And if we want to make some investments, we should, we should think about that ourselves. I don't know what it is right now. I'm not sure. It's five thousand dollars, it's ten thousand dollars.
Can we just dust the screen?
Dust the screen?
On the, the big screen.
Projector thingy?
The big white screen.
Oh, okay.
We'll give you a really long duster.
I mean, I would, I would honestly say as a like viewer of town meeting and I, we are up at the front, right? But the, um, the screen's a little dusty. It's fine. But actually like the, the lumens on the, like the.
Limens are, yeah, yeah.
So I, if, if there is like a projector or something that, that can, you know.
Oh, it, all the projector, not all the screen.
The, when you look at the screen, it's very dim. There's not, it's, we, so like the lumens on.
The lighting overall in the auditorium is tough. We've talked about this, you know.
It is tough. And we can, and we have a challenge with that because I could bring in somebody from the facilities to manage the lights and dim them when we do projections. However, then WinCam can't do what they need to do to project it. So we've got some competing interests there too. And we've always erred on the side that WinCam is a great partner. We're going to make that look really great. And we're gonna, we're gonna kind of do the best we can.
They're good about upgrading technology though as well. So, you know, and so they, they usually try to stay on top of things. So I'm sure they'll, they'll welcome the. And so they usually try to stay on top of things, so I'm sure they'll welcome the conversation with us as well.
Yeah, so I would just say.
You gave me some good ideas.
I don't know about the dust, the dust is kind of, that's tradition. You know, I wouldn't want to break some of that.
Same lower left corner every time? And I'm like, oh, is that like something fancy on the slide?
Like a hand.
I'm on it. I'll get it, I'll figure it out for you.
Anyway, between the budget request through the manager's office to what you might need to a piece of equipment that's, you know, maybe a one-time purchase or maybe give us a couple of options. But I think it'd be, you know, I'm thinking in advance of the spring.
Oh, absolutely.
Not just, you know, not just for long term, but if we, what can we do to support this effort, potentially with some money that, because it's the warrant and it's the work, it's the work that we want to get through with the town. So just keep that in mind and keep Steve updated so we can get it on the future agenda.
I'm still, like, even though it's not until either February or spring, I'm working on this now, building it, developing it, and then we'll have that conversation again.
Michelle, you'll take the lead for us on this and stay connected to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
While we're all here, seven o'clock for everybody?
I love seven o'clock. Seven thirty might be better, but.
Seven, seven, from a clerking standpoint, my 34 years, I show my age. You've, seven o'clock is good.
Yeah.
Six thirty's too early, you've got people feeding kids. Seven thirty's too late because those same people who fed the kids are sitting in the meeting. They've got to go home and get to, get to everything packed. And I, I mean, I raised three kids, I know what it's like. And the majority, we've got, I won't say majority, but you're getting pretty close that you've got a lot of young families on this town meeting. They're very interested in what's happening in the town and they want to stay committed. But I think a seven to 10 is your window. And in a bad night, seven, you know, to 10:20, Phil, no later.
Hard out, seven, ten thirty.
Ten thirty, absolutely dropped in. So anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me say this publicly so that the people at home also know that there's, you know, integrity in the vote, in the process, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, thank you, Nick, for your patience. We'll now talk Mystic School.
And they have all the certified votes done, so those will be going out tomorrow morning.
Nice. Thank you.
Good evening.
So just to catch you up, we had, in the manager's report, we asked Steve to just delay the more robust conversation about the annex and the shoring and the foundational work until you were able to join us. And I think there's some broader, you know, Mystic School building kind of concerns we want to make sure we cover. And then I think Paris, we're going to tee up potentially the directors, board of directors idea. But we want to start maybe with the annex and the work. Is that a good place to start, Steve? Nick, I don't care which wants to start, but.
Do you want to give an overview? I sort of described what I was talking about. My point in bringing it to this board is that you are now the custodians of that property. And the most immediate need, if you will, is relates to the potential temporary shoring of that wing where it was found that shoring was needed. The initial cost projection for that is about $54,000 for about a six-month period. As I saw the notes from our folks. With the reinspection at six-month intervals, unless there's something new. But it's considered to be temporary shoring, whatever that temporary means. But in the meantime, what happens for the permanent fix, if you choose to go that way, needs to be determined. Cost factors are all out there. And the broader question is, what's the future of that building? So with that, I can turn it to you.
Yeah, so you explained it pretty well. So we're not able to use the annex part of the building right now as, you know, obviously for being very cautious about making sure it's shored up. It's, it's, we're making do, but it's not, it's not ideal for our programming. We're kind of, we've combined several different classes. If you know our after-school program, it's a robust, very active program. We have seven classrooms and then we divide the eighth classroom for all of our enrichment programs that we run hourly there. So we have actually two enrichments in one classroom. We've had to move all of that out of that wing into the main or the older part of the building up until where the main office is in that area. We don't have any additional space to use. The gym is used, whether Kids' Corner is in there or we have other enrichment program going on in there after school. So we've had nothing, we've had to combine classrooms. So some of that means, you know, we have 40 kids in a classroom. We've been creative with our scheduling to rotate one group outside, keep them inside. It's getting colder though and snow's coming, so we know that that's probably not going to be ideal if this goes for a long time. So we've been really trying to get this rectified, this, you know, hoping that we could get it shored up, hopefully by mid-December. And I think the key is, you know, funding. Funding is always the key with everything, you know, when big things happen. A little follow-up on what Steve said is the initial cost of the shoring is about $40,000 with, and that includes the first month rental. The rentals for the six months is going to bring in over $50,000. So I think it was $54,000 for the six months of rental. We know that a long-term repair is probably going to be a little bit more than six months for things to kind of develop, get engineering and design, figure out that funding. So the grand scheme and cost is going to stretch out probably further than that, just being completely transparent. In terms of the rec department, you know, we funded the engineering and design, which was I think $14,000 around that area. Because this is detrimental to our program not operating at full strength. So we want to, we want to get this done. For us, we're hoping that there's a, there's an outlet for us to, for the town to help us with the initial shoring cost. And I know trying to fund the monthly fees might be something that we can discuss. I think between the rec department, whether it's the enterprise or looking into our EEC grant money, we might be able to help with that. And I say that because it's so important for us to get these classrooms back, not just for the kids and the program and the way we structure, but also for the staff.
So if the shoring is in, you could put the classroom.
As soon as that shoring is done and inspected, we can get them back up and running. And talking to one of the contractors, he said they were about, you know, two weeks out from starting the project. And he thinks that getting the shoring done would be a week to a week and a half. So we could be up and running less than a month if we can get the money put aside, we can get that moving forward. And so hopefully before we get to the new year, we could be back to normal operations.
The $14,000 of engineering and design, that was for the $54,000 of shoring or that was for the permanent solution?
That was just for the shoring engineering, yeah.
So with, so you're down two classrooms, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the 54 number, that's for six months, that includes the equipment rental and the installation and all that other stuff.
Correct.
If we're, if at the end of six months, we need another six months, what's the cost of that next six months?
So the rental of the equipment is about $1,500, give or take, per month. And I think the engineering for a check on that is right around the same range. It's less than $2,000. So we're not talking huge bucks, but it'll add up over, you know, month by month.
Of course.
But it's much less.
Yeah, it's not $54,000 every six months.
Correct, yeah.
Because we might not have a full-blown answer for what the permanent solution is going to be.
So it sounds like it's about 20.
Yeah, so my thing is I, you know, I'd like to get this, the, I know there's a lot of layers to this, right? It's like lasagna with the building and what's going on, what the long-term plan is. But for us, it's, you know, let's get this up and running and then that gives us, that buys us a little time to figure out if, you know, if a permanent fix is the best way to go or if there's, if we need to kind of adjust where we're going with the building and how we operate there. So that's kind of my two senses in terms of where we're at and how we want to operate that.
So it sounds like, I just want to make sure that, we want to make sure that tonight, A, there's agreement to move forward with the shoring and B, we're going to problem solve funding for that project, right? We do have modest lease payments coming in now to Kids' Corner, starting December. I don't know if, probably, I would think schools collected November's rent. But we now get the lease, which could pay for some of the equipment rental.
We can ask the school committee to help. I mean, this asset has been ours for five days to help us with the shoring cost from the equipment rental fund that the Kids' Corner payments went into.
Yep.
They could say no, but.
Yes.
In the spirit of, we're all trying to. And this was known before the transfer as well.
This was known before the transfer. So I'm just saying that there is some recurring payment coming our way for some of that rental cost. But it's not $54,000, it's not available to us tomorrow. But I just want to sort of, because I think, you know, everyone recognizes, Bill pointed out, Nick does too. It's going to be inspected in six months. We may need to shore it up another six months. There's this longer term, what's the disposition of the building? But I don't know that we want to be in the whole, well, we're not going to pay the rental fee, so you're back to sending the kids outside and not having classrooms. I don't think we're going to make a short-term decision. But within 12 months, we need to understand, because I'm sure the permanent solution is very significant. And do we, as now the owners of the property, want to make that kind of investment in that building? Don't know, right? But we sure, I think we need to make it operational. So that's one source of money is the rental. So we can, let's ask Town Manager, maybe it's you or Mark, Steve, to reach out to schools on the building rental or at least the rent that they've collected to help with some of the shoring costs.
Those classrooms are used for RAP?
So they use for Kids', Kids' Corner, Kids' Connection preschool and RAP in the afternoon and then also enrichment programs. So as we, we're kind of going from the fall to the winter. And, you know, if we don't have that, we're back into the January, we're going to have to adjust how we operate and it's going to affect the bottom line because we won't be able to offer as much. So we're going to, we're reducing our revenue ability making.
Any idea how much? Because that would be a good thing to, if we're saying like we're giving up 30 grand in revenue.
Yeah, it, I mean, it.
But who do we even make?
It's five days, so if you think about it, we have two classrooms in there, five days a week, right? In terms of enrichment. And it could easily be in a single season over 30 grand, depending on how popular those are.
If we had, if we go to town meeting right now, we could get them, I'm pretty sure we can get that money from town meeting. The problem is we don't have town meeting now for another six months. So we're trying to find spare change to get this done. A reserve fund would be the, would be the most appropriate spot. We go to FinCom, you're saying? Incom, yeah.
Yes.
And this would be.
Yes. Any given year, yep.
Or strategic maintenance.
I don't know, they didn't even have an article to replenish, so they may not have spent much. Because very often at fall time meeting, it comes back to, gets rounded back up to 400K. So I assume they have close to it.
They barely spent any because the planning came back.
Came back through. So I think reserve fund transfer potentially for the first $54,000. Let's see if schools can give us some of that. So the ask is 50,000 or something. I assume there's no other money, Steve, in any other budget? I would think not.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And that reserve fund request would come from us?
Yes. Select Board. Yep. And we could, you know, Nick could go, one of us could accompany Nick to that meeting with FinCom.
You don't want to send him in alone, is why I was asking, so.
No, it should, it should come from us.
Don't mind.
And I don't know, I can text Derek and see when the next meeting is, but we can, it's a form that you fill out. We can try to get that on their next meeting and I'll try to get that answer tomorrow. And then if you're, if you're billed, if you're, you know, vendor is really two weeks out and, okay, the next meeting's this, would you be ready to be mobilized right after Thanksgiving? Which would be great if FinCom meets between now and the end of the month. That's probably the quickest path forward to get you. And then, you know, that goes up, controller releases the money. It moves pretty quickly after FinCom takes the vote. Longer term, I think it would be good to know what that monthly cost is. And then between the rental income that we'll start to receive, if there's still, this is longer play for this fiscal year, Nick, if there's, then we're still short with the rental amount, you know, after the inspection and we have to cover May and June, then we can put an article on at the Springtown meeting for current year expenditures and then build into the budget for FY '27 if need be as equipment or expense, so.
How are we going to figure out the actual solution here?
Is there engineering on?
So right now the Gail.
Fund engineering?
Yeah. The Gail Engineering is developing a proposal for the permanence. We'll know what the actual engineering cost will be. And then we'll have another discussion on if and how that would be funded.
Okay.
That might be a Springtown meeting, I don't know how we'd look at that.
These for the permanent repairs?
Yeah, they're going to submit a proposal to Peter.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
That Springtown meeting, then we're talking funding Falltown meeting, funding the actual construction.
Yeah.
Can we make sure the scope is wide enough to look at all structural issues that are imminent?
Yeah, so the Gail went down and inspected all of the posts throughout that whole area.
Yeah.
And so they did, they did already say that half of them are in great shape. The other ones are not, not in great shape.
Need a motion for the sake of going to FinCom?
Yes, we might as well.
Move that we support the Recreation Department with presenting a reserve fund transfer to FinCom in approximately $54,000, in the amount of approximately $54,000.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, just for the sake of though, there's no FinCom meeting noticed anywhere on the calendar?
No.
So I don't know who's going to talk to schools, but maybe to get this moving, if they have more liquid funds that can be accessed sooner and repaid even.
We can pursue it.
Yeah. So you're not waiting until mid-December?
FinCom can also call a meeting.
They would, they could call it for just that reason.
Yeah. They can call it like a Zoom meeting.
Forty-eight hours?
Yeah.
Seventy-two hours, whatever it is.
Yes. I mean, you know. I'll speak to Derek. Yep. I might could text him now, but I won't. I'll speak to him tomorrow. It's unanticipated, you know, it's not something, it's not deferred maintenance that we just, we didn't know about, so. Okay. I will talk to Derek and if you can talk with schools and see, you know, collected rental revenue or make sure that rental revenue is starting to flow our way, that'd be great. Okay, so the next topic, slightly off, I'll take a quick peek.
Yeah, it's really a state of town update, can I take it, Michelle?
Yes.
So this is actually a state of the town update, but since Nick is here, we thought we might as well talk about it now. State of the town is one item lower. So a group had met with Nick, maybe a month and a bit ago at this point. It was Michelle, myself and a school committee member, Stephanie Minargi, school committee and capital planning. And we had a good conversation about rec as part of state of the town. And there's a lot of programs in that building, adult education, RAP, Kids', Kids' Connection. There's programs in the school buildings. There's potential additional education you're looking to do broadly. And it struck us in that conversation that these are really complicated issues, you know. This whole question about Mystic has been, well, you know, we're not going to be in Mystic in a year, so let's not do CapEx in it. And then we end up in a really tough spot. And in fact, how many years have you heard that? Probably every year you've worked for the town of Winchester.
Six years.
Yeah. And so we, we need a vision and Nick has a lot of jobs. And the question is, can we, you know, we talked about this, I think, a couple of times at State of the Town. I mentioned it in a response to a town meeting member's question on night three of town meeting as well, which is, can we get Nick a few people? Because we're otherwise the board for not, now we just, now we have care and control of the Mystic school itself. I guess we can start calling it the Mystic Building, as well as, you know, we're, we're actually the RAC board. So this isn't the idea of, of giving, you know, creating a board that then supervises, you know, our RAC director who, who will continue to report to our town manager, but just a group of volunteers and advisory board who can help him in really answering these questions of what's our programmatic vision? What facilities should we, should host the programs? And how do we enhance, you know, coordination with, with, with other sort of town bodies? As, as it relates to, to, to capital as well as fields, assets, you know, and other private entities? It's a very schematic view of it, but the idea is can we, there's volunteers who are really interested in it. We obviously want volunteers who are going to work, not volunteers who are going to give you their opinions. Their opinions too, but we also want them to take on real work for you. And I, and I, I believe there's a lot of people interested in town to help think this through. And it's obviously just really hard for us as a select board to devote meaningful bandwidth to these questions, given that we have a million other things to do.
Nick, would you like to?
Yeah, I, I think I'm one of the only recreation departments in the state that doesn't have a, some sort of board. There's, there's very few that are, I, I don't know of any actually. I had a great talk with the Lexington Recreation Director at our MRPA meeting the other day. They're very similar to us, they're a little bit larger, they have a golf course that helps with their, their overall revenue. But they are also an enterprise account. And they have a really great working board. They, they divide and conquer all things. They, they do a lot of the canvassing of the community and make sure recreation is, is represented well, that not only recreation is represented, but the, the citizens, because recreation is, you know, all ages. It's multi-generational, so making sure that they're offering and, and representing, you know, what, what the, the makeup of the community is as well. They have a five-person advisory board. I'm going to get their charge revolving around that so that we don't have to kind of recreate the wheel. I think we take a look at that and then kind of, maybe I can get a couple others and we can make sure whatever comes together works for Winchester. And, and, and she actually mentioned that they might be moving to a seven-person board because the work is so extensive that they're doing now and they have a lot of young families that are getting involved, much like we do at town meeting. So I don't think we need to go there yet, but that's a good thing to have, knowing that the board's working for the RAC department and really doing a lot of good work there. So if we can kind of mirror some of that, I think we'd be in good shape. There's so many projects going on with the WCCP as well, throwing that into there. So having, you know, extra eyes and ears and hands on deck would be, would be a godsend for the department as we're growing. And we're growing at good bits every year, high percentages, you know, 10, 15, 20% every year.
So I wonder if like the COA's board is also not a good example too. Our Council on Aging, which has a, you know, appointed board.
I think that's a terrific example.
Yeah, appointed board with a director of, you know, a council on aging employee and then an advisory board. So between other RACs but also here in town, what does that look like? I think they have seven members, but we would probably want to start with five. So maybe pull that, we can get you in touch with, well, you can talk to Philip Belts, but we'll also, we can get you in touch with their director as well if need be, the board chair.
So do we need to approve this or?
I think it's a discussion for tonight. I think we would want to approve it, if we want to, we want to approve it, you know, soon-ish.
The development of it so we can just get it going, so.
Yeah, it was more, so we, we talked about, Michelle and I talked about State of the Town. I said it at the floor town meeting, I thought it was appropriate for this board to everyone have a chance to weigh in on whether they like it. And if so, we can develop more, we could approve it, we develop more, or we could just develop more and bring it back.
Well, if Nick wants it, I mean, it's, you know, that would be my only concern if he didn't, right?
You want more cooks in your kitchen, Nick, you sure about that now? Careful what you wish for, right?
It is, it's fifty-fifty one way or the other, right? But we're getting to a point where we need a little bit more help to get some things through. It's only so far we can be stretched. And there's a lot of great people in town that have their finger on the pulse of things that, that are recreation based. And I think there's some good fits in town and people would be excited to be part of the board.
Yeah, and I, I think that you, you had made that comment to me, which is that you, you don't, you're not looking for a, a group of people who show up a lot of, you know, strong opinions about what you shouldn't be doing or shouldn't be doing and then don't do any, any work.
So how many of those?
Where would we find five?
So I, I do think having a group, you know, that, obviously we can point them about that. It's a group of people you want to work with who are ready to subtilly dig in is, is quite important, which is why that first bullet reads sort of in consultation with the RAC director.
I mean, the structure makes sense. I think the questions are the right ones. Maybe there are more as it evolves, but I would say this is something, you know, I'd like to see move sooner than later. And I don't know what we need to do in order to make that happen, of course. I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know what everybody else's.
Do, how do, Bill and Anthea, how do you feel about that assertion?
I think it's a great idea. And my questions are, we have a field committee. They have a very specific sort of use. So what would be the sort of budding of, of a RAC board versus a, a field committee? Because there's certainly an overlap there. Also, we five are the Parks Commissioners in Winchester for lack of Parks Commissioners. So how does that interact as, with that interact as well? And kind of like, then we, where, where do the circles in this Venn diagram overlap and, and touch? And who has?
I can take the second one.
Yeah, so in terms of the field, the field management committee, they have a very specific and pointed role. That's supported by two different bylaws and that's basically what they do. Recommendation board to the town manager's office. I'm a part of that board, I'm not, I don't oversee that board. The, the, the Recreation Board would be more in terms of how we're monitoring and, and growing our enterprise, which is completely separate from Field Management Committee. I mean, we have the, the, almost one of the largest play tennis courts in the country that's municipal that we manage and rep, and run. Where we have some revitalization of the Borgard area that we're going to be looking at and looking for people that have all hands on deck with some of those. The renovation of, of the tennis courts is a massive undertaking. I'd love to have a board to help with that process. The, the Mystic School is a huge example we just talked about, like what is the future that, what is the future of the RAC department look like? How are we transitioning into the future? We have a lot of pressure from the community as we continue to grow. There's a lot of good excitement for the RAC department. We get a lot of great feedback. With growth comes more expectations on more stuff, right? There's a, there's an expectation that we're going to start to grow back into more of a community education department. We're offering way more adult programs. We don't have the bandwidth to do that. We need help to put that, to develop it, to get it together. We're going to be hiring, we're going to need to hire somebody to get that done. So there's a lot of, lot of moving parts in terms of the enterprise. We took over, when I took over, it was the middle of COVID, right? We, we didn't even make a million dollars that year, we had to get bailed out. We're on the cusp of being a $3 million organization, which people didn't think that was possible. So as we're growing and, and expanding, having more people on deck to push some of the, the political aspects and helping with boards, helping with some of the, the, the policymaking and, and where we're going to put our eggs in that basket is going to be very helpful for me and for the department as a whole. A lot of that, we have so many boards and communities in towns, navigating that as a one person is, is, is a, is a pretty big task. And, and, and everyone seems to be stretched thin in town, so having that support would be extremely helpful. Just even to have conversations outside of the realm of committee.
And people that are excited about those things as well, right?
Yep.
I mean, I don't know how you do all the YouTube. I mean, and the expansion of our programs, and I think people see that, but they don't realize that's also revenue that is coming in for our facilities. When you look at pickleball courts and things like that, like the demand for recreation here is, is high. So you, you meeting it is difficult and needs some support beyond, certainly staff is, is part of the conversation, but.
So one thing I'm thinking, and Bill, I want to actually, before I make, are you in favor? Before I make a recommendation on how to move forward?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in your department every day. There's, there's not a week that goes by that I don't talk to Matt or Chris or, you know, whoever's in the office. We've nailed ourselves with all the different programs that you guys have put together. And Carol McCollum has come close to saving my family. So supporting the WinRAC department is very important to me. I, I want to see this happen because I think it's just going to lead to more programs, better programs and more people around town being involved and seeing just what good their local government can do for them and the community that it can build. So this is a great idea and I'm happy to give whatever time is necessary to help write the effectuating document that puts the board together in a way that coordinates it properly with all the other interests around town and gives them the charge that they need so that they're focused on how they can do the most good. So I'm all for it.
So I'm, I'm being fact-checked in real time. COA has 11 people on their board, so just wanted to point that out. So what I was thinking as a next step for Nick, similar to what we did with 164 with the trust, right? We asked Marty to put together a work plan to come back with some ideas and to update us in like three months' time. If you can come back in two months' time, whenever it's ready. But I think, you know, a draft charter, you know, requirements maybe for volunteers, a description type thing of what the board might do, expected meeting cadence. I mean, we can, we can, any one of us can help you with Nick, so with this Nick, so make sure you avail us and Steve's office of that. But I think putting it on you with whoever you wish to work, you know, we'll make introductions of the board chairs, but maybe come back in two months or three months, like say by February with an outline, potential charge, you know, a statement, not a statement of work, but an actual mission or charter for the group. And then when you'd want to actually start to have appointments roll in. Because it needs to launch at a time that you can actually, you know, onboard people. We need to advertise, we need to interview, but you need to be able to, you know, give them something to do. So giving you a board and then stressing about your first meeting isn't very helpful. So just what does that calendar look like for you? So what are they going to do and when do you think you want to spin them up? And then we can work backward from getting people seated in those seats. That's just a thought. But if it's, I think with the trust, it was very helpful for us to get the work plan, the development plan, the who and the what, because they were the closest to it. Anybody want to add to that?
I can't, happy to help you with any of the documentation.
The only thing I think with the trust, I think we created the trust and then we put some folks on the trust. And I think then we came up with the work plan.
Yep.
You know, so that's the only thing I.
I'm thinking of the work plan, just the implementation of when he wants to have this board ready.
Yeah, well, I was just saying if there are, if, if we establish it, he gets board members and then they.
They can start doing the things you want to do?
Yes, or they can help with the work plan or they can help facilitate it. Just because I'm sure there's some people that you have in mind already that would be good as this advisor and, you know, at least the kickoff of the advisory board.
Right, and you can have some of those people help you just develop this. But I, I don't want to give you a board before you're ready to have a board, but I also want to make sure we know if we're recruiting people the same way we do for other boards, that we're getting the right kinds of availability and qualifications and energy that you, that you think you need.
But I, I think getting a draft charter, the meeting cadence and, and some of that together, I think probably a lot of the, the majority of this board might be willing to help you with it, so.
I think everybody would.
Yeah, they, so your, your timing on it, we, I think we are, we're all very happy to help out with that. But yeah, I think.
But I think if there's other communities doing, I mean, it's going to be, you know, somewhat of cobbling together of best practices from other places, right? So I don't, I don't have that visibility like you do. So if there's other communities that we can kind of cut and paste, it might make sense. And it can evolve over time, right?
Right.
So.
Any questions for us? Basically, I think you heard is like, let's, let's go forth and try to figure it out, anything you need from us.
Not, not necessarily at this point. Like I'll put some stuff together and then we'll share it and, you know, have a working plan and we'll, we'll get something together. I'm looking forward to it. I've seen, I've seen, you know, RAC committees work really, really well. The town of Bedford had a great one, they're very supportive, we grew the program immensely. And, and they were, they were very helpful. And I see that in Lexington and some other communities around here. So hoping we can kind of earmark that and, and, and try to, try to, try to put something very similar together here.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Paris, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
And yeah, let's, and let us know if you need some help on that reserve fund transfer. Certainly Stacy can help with that. And I'll try to get back to you with FinCom and when we can get that in front of them.
Okay, great.
I'll circle back with Steve and you tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Nick, thanks for your patience tonight. All right. So the next item on the agenda was something that had come up over the summer. Two different board members had wanted to throw overnight, winter overnight parking on the agenda. And I wanted to get through fall time meeting, but tonight's, we're not necessarily unpacking the policy and advertising a public hearing on this topic. But we hear a lot about enforcement, about overnight parking, and just wanted to maybe, let's time limit it, 10 minutes on what ideas people might have to solve some of the challenge that we have with current folks who don't have enough off-street parking. And we know if we develop Center Business District with 3A and North Main Street or even 10 Converse, it's, you know, it's one space per unit. And so we're going to be developing buildings and housing with, you know, parking requirements that may not fit the need of the residents. And overnight parking in the winter would just become more exacerbated. So this is just a bit of a, you know, the feel of the board, where do we think? Do we think we have a problem we want to try to resolve? And then what kinds of ideas do folks have? So I'll throw it out there and I'll start my watch.
Oh, do we have a timer?
I'm going to set a timer, I'm going to do 10 minutes.
I think we do have a problem to solve. And, you know, we've heard from residents a lot, especially in recent years. And whatever you want to attribute warmer weather to, we, it seems that the inclement weather, kind of snow emergency stuff has been pushed later into the year than it had been in the past. And so there's a lot of, the, the parking ban goes into effect pretty early and is not necessarily, you know, connected to those events. So, you know, I've lived in other communities where the blue light goes on, on the traffic signals and people know it's a snow emergency and they got to figure out where to go with their car, right? And, or if they know that they're going away for a few days, where they're going to put their car in case snow is coming. And if people don't have driveways or whatever. So I guess the question is maybe to coordinate with Bob and Danny and see what, what options maybe we could, you know, implement. Because I think, I don't, I don't know how we're enforcing it either because it seems, you know, like it's.
A bit inconsistent, maybe?
Yeah, that's a good word, yeah.
Okay. Paris, I'll just go this way, around the table.
Mr. Trump.
Okay, Bill?
It does seem like a policy that is broader and over-replied than it needs to be and then selectively enforced. If there's a way of making it better attuned to the actual need, like what Mike said in terms of maybe, you know, a warning when an actual snow emergency is expected or limiting the timeframe or really targeting the streets where it's more of an issue. I'm happy to take any of those approaches to see how we can, you know, get rid of an unnecessary burden on our residents. And then the only thing, just, you know, all that said, I will always defer to what our emergency professionals are going to say is necessary for safety. So I respect that sometimes ensuring safety requires a little bit of inconvenience, but that's, that's important. I just think that we do have a little bit more inconvenience than we need to on our residents for this issue right now. So it can and probably should be explored.
Okay. You were one of the people who wanted this on the agenda, so here you go.
Follow-up to that, I think we should sort of have a next up with EPW to understand. So I grew up in Arlington and if you had a guest visiting, you called and you said, I've got someone parked on my street overnight. Can you not ticket them? And they'd say, thanks for letting us know. And I called one time after we moved here and they were like, we don't do that. And also you live on a small street, so we're probably not going to drive down your street, don't worry about it. So I think that, you know, enforcement tends to go towards heavier trafficked streets as well as possibly when neighbors call and say there's cars on the street that shouldn't be parked on the street right now. So I, I think that's something to consider because then Arlington then moved to, well, you can have a municipal sticker and you can park in the school parking lot until 7:00 AM. And, and not just actually in the wintertime, but I think all year long. You, you can park here overnight with a sticker if you don't have a parking spot. And, you know, knowing that, you know, the janks for snow emergencies is pretty far for a lot of people.
And not that big?
Yeah, not that big. Are there opportunities and working with DPW to say, you know, can we have people park in Morocco Lot? Or is there's not a lot of, not really parking at Lincoln?
No.
Oh, but that's closer, but like are.
That's close to janks.
Close to janks. Are, are there kind of other town lots that DPW would be comfortable with? People can park here until X time in the morning and then maybe, you know, snow emergencies are, remain an exception. But I think there's probably some more flexibility and opportunity to start to alleviate the concerns of people who need to park on, on the street without, without getting in the way of the concerns of DPW for we don't know if it's going to be icy. And, you know, there, it might not be a snow emergency, but we don't know if there's going to be some black ice or a flash freeze that we're, we're not expecting. So, you know, something that can kind of thread the needle a little bit to start.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're five minutes in, we can wrap it up maybe soon. So some thoughts on, we could definitely do some follow-up with DPW and police around, you know, access, public safety, snowplow. Definitely, I think, you know, schools parking lots or Apogee parking lot, we're going to have, you know, Waterfield, there will be parking for residents at some point at Waterfield. But I mean, if there's overflow, if there's still people living there, could, you know, behind the middle school, could that be an option? Could Apogee lot be an option for overnight? But they need to be taken out at a certain point because we want commuters to use it too. So what other assets do we have? And North Main Street, I mean, it's, we've talked about, I feel like Paris, you and I had this conversation. Creative Corner, the preschool has a massive parking lot from what was an old church. You know, could, could a developer on North Main Street, I'm not saying the town needs to be in the lease business, but could a developer say, hey, can I grab 30 spots from you and let my, my new residents walk a block? And let my, my new residents walk a block and a half and they can park there? Like what else because-
Especially after 5:00 PM when the school's closed.
Or even after 5:00 or even just over, right, overnight. What are some other assets? That, for North Main Street, there's no school right there, there's Lynch, which isn't exactly right at North Main.
No.
And as development pushes from the CBD up North Main Street, they're going to need to have a place to put some of those cars. And to Anthea's point, Jenks isn't, it's, it's not terribly convenient beyond this immediate area. And it's, it's also, I'm sure, rather full rather quickly. So what other assets do we have in town? And how, I mean, Boston, it was, you park in any school until 7:00 o'clock.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the mirror image idea, yeah, that's super common here and in, in other states, right?
Yes.
And not just in, I mean, in places like Arlington or Winchester that are close in suburbs, not just in the cities.
Yes.
Like in, like in Westchester County, New York, a lot of the towns do that at, you know, 5:30 or 6:00 o'clock until the morning you can park.
Yep.
You don't have to move.
Okay, so other thoughts before we wrap it up?
I hate to, I hate to operate on rumors, but I've heard rumors that the police enforce the overnight ban when people call and they say, hey, this bunch of cars out here, come ticket them. Does the police have to, do they have to respond to that? We suggest that maybe they don't and, and we save enforcement for when it's really important.
Could have that conversation, for sure.
I mean, I don't know, I, yeah.
What's the, it sounded like the three of you, maybe even all four of you were in agreement on this. What, or what's the proposal here? Is it to move back the time this is effective?
We don't have a proposal yet. I think we want to talk to DPW before we push it back. I think, I think Mike's point, no, November it starts and there's not a lot of snow. And, you know, if we said if it's December or January, but let's just even look at weather patterns or plowing or overtime or salt events. So before we actually push the start time into December, I want to talk to DPW and see if we had to go out with plows and sand a bunch of December times.
It doesn't work for anyone in the sense that I think with the selective enforcement, then when we're trying to plow, there's still cars on the street that get plowed around and somewhat in, right?
Correct.
And so that's not helping anybody either. So, and fire as well, right? So that's another, you know-
Yes.
Please fire DPW are the, the ones I think for, for that to-
So I would say, Paris, we have some ideas.
They can explore a snow zone sign, sign, I mean, that, that's certainly, right, we used to live in City of Chicago. It's, there's signs that say, snow zone two inches or more, you can't park overnight and, and into the morning. And otherwise you can even, so it's not time-based, it's actually-
Yeah, snow-based.
Precipitation-based, yeah.
So I think we're just spitballing, I don't think we have a firm idea, but I, I took some notes and we can follow up with DPW and we can circle back maybe at our next meeting and see if we want to coalesce around some recommendations. If you have any questions that you want to make sure we ask police or DPW, can you maybe send them into Patty and to Steve and we'll follow up on that?
There was a resident who did a pretty thorough report.
Yep.
So Jeremy Elliott, I think, yeah.
Probably find that again.
Yep.
So yeah, so I think we didn't kind of put out a whole ask, this was just kind of the initial-
Yeah.
-conversation, just to get-
Do we even want to kick the tires on this? Do we want to revisit it? Was really the ask, and it, it seems like we do. So let's just try to make some progress. Okay. Nine minutes and like 25 seconds, well done. Last item is-
Just one more thing, okay.
You're kidding. Select Board update, Committee updates. Audit Committee is meeting in December 9th, I believe it is. If someone wants to live fact-check me, they certainly can. Oh, Bill, by the way, Lynch Solar did get hooked up, the transformer on November 3rd.
Oh, great.
AFPVC got back to me and during the meeting.
Wonderful.
So that's done.
Thank you to them.
I'm handing out a calendar here.
And does that mean we didn't, did that fit our budgeting for the power?
It should have. We had budgeted, I think, you know, not quite a half a year. And if we're actually hooked up after two full months of school, I mean, I could check with Stacy, but we were operational September, October-
Right.
-without solar. So the plan was Monday night, the 3rd, and Jay Nardone confirmed it did. So I, I would think we can check. But there was, the concern on energy was, even though we'd budgeted maybe a quarter's worth of energy, that's one large bucket of sort of municipal energy that even if it ran over by $12,000 in the grand scheme of energy costs, Comptroller wasn't too concerned that we need to do like reserve fund or town meeting because she thought we'd have some savings elsewhere. So I bet we hit it pretty much spot-on, but if we didn't, Comptroller wasn't too concerned.
That's something to brag about.
Yeah. So those are my updates. Not that I'm on the ever-source transformer update, but there you have it. Anything from Fields or Capital or Cable?
No, I saw the Fields presentation at town meeting from Michael Crane and no meeting since then.
Okay. And Mike, the trust, I know we just-
Yeah, we're meeting, I think, tomorrow with the trust as well, so I think everybody's pretty excited about moving forward with that project. And so we'll be meeting again with Russ Tanner, who is going to be the kind of facilitator of the old, the whole process. So, who does quite a bit of work in Lexington and surrounding communities, so.
So just before we move on to State of the Town, just, you know, thinking about the parallel with Nick and Rec and we had the trust give a work plan, who might develop it. It's now in their care and control. Do we want to just say thank you and go execute? Does the select board want to have any more status from the trust? I mean, we asked them to sort of deliver what they did and give us a plan and we would try to give it back to them at fall time meeting. Do we have any more, do we close the loop with them in any way?
We can certainly, and, you know, kind of quarterly have like an update. You know, I think it's, at this point, still, you know-
It's still very early in the stages.
Yeah, early, so, so, yeah, certainly we can-
Okay. So maybe in the first quarter, we can ask Marty for an update, because maybe there's going to be some need for like DPW support or engineering support or something around, you know, who knows? If there's any site work or something that they might need some town support on?
Yeah, and I think the trust has talked about this being a community project as well and so getting volunteers involved as well as-
Okay.
You know, mobilizing a general contractor and things like that. So, I mean, ultimately, you know, we've got to put out an RFP and we've got to, you know-
Yes.
-move through it that way. So we're, we're a ways away from, you know, swinging hammers.
Agreed, okay. So, okay, Paris, take it away.
Yeah, I do, I do want to flag climate action, they had sent us an email.
Do you want to start with that then, or?
If it's quick, sure.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm just flagging it. I actually don't think we have a liaison on the climate action, but Rec sent us all an email, so he had asked us.
Isn't Mike liaison?
It's me, yeah.
Oh, you are?
Yep, so.
It's on the list, so, okay. So he had sent us an email. 12- Friday, asking us to write a letter to the delegation about this pending legislation on, on climate change, energy programs. I'm happy to give my opinion.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I'm supportive of, of doing this. I thought focusing as a select board, I, I, I get queasy about the idea of, of, of us weighing in on, on, you know, legislation or political topics that don't concern us. So I, I thought that, you know, while I agree with all of it, the first, second, and third bullets, sorry, first, second, and fourth bullets would be the right ones. So just sort of say, we're concerned about this bill because it would cost our town money, you know, the $600,000, the $594 for Lynch, and, and also the, the decarb money we're counting on. And then it would make it harder for us to implement our cap, the CAP would be the right points to make. The third bullet, while I personally agree with it, I thought was more of a generic policy comment, less related to the town. So I was supportive of it pending that, that tweak.
How do, how do people feel? I can't say I've read the actual law, but-
I've, I've read a lot about the law, I haven't read the law, I've read the articles in Commonwealth Beacon and the Globe.
Okay. Want to make a motion? Then we can have more discussion if we wish.
I would move that we, we endorse a letter to our four legislators who represent the town of Winchester, substantially similar to the draft letter Rickino provided to us, opposing House Bill 4744, focusing on the first, second, and fourth bullets that, you know, that, that describe the impact on the, on the town of Winchester. And then, you know, someone should just edit it for clarity and grammar and all that.
It's first, second, and fourth bullets, is that what you said?
I would just take, personally, I would just take the third one out. I, I personally agree with it, it just gets into the territory of us opining on policy, as opposed to opining on town priorities.
Just trying to get it straight, because if we're going to ask Patty or someone in the manager's office to draft it for us, I want to make sure we hit it right.
I can take a shot and circulate it, but whatever.
If Paris is going to take a, I mean, I don't, as long as it's pretty close to what's there, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily-
No, they, just time is of the essence, right? They want to have it in their hands by Wednesday. So if you want to take a, the lead on it, Paris, and then I'll circle back with, I'll get Patty a heads up in the morning. And then we could always just, you know-
If you want to talk, you sign it.
Docu-sign it.
Okay.
Or, or we can-
Sign on.
And understand where we're sending it to.
Put it on Letterhead, it's going to our delegation, so-
All of them? Okay, yeah, we'll put on Letterhead, yes.
This is Pat Jalen and Mike Day.
And Chikolo, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Paris, for jumping on that. Okay, now?
And then State of the Town, so, it's late, so this should be quick. So everyone has the calendar in front of them. So I'll just, I, I wanted to give people a, a clear view from now through mid-February, when we have to transmit, the deadline to transmit a, a final figure to the clerk is February 14th. So if we, and, and Mary Ellen has, has given us the information, that's really the second half of this memo. So where we are, sort of marrying up the planning effort and the deadlines we have to hit for a March 21st election, which is, which is what she's presently planning, we have today, we're obviously reviewing the calendar, we have, and we had an initial review of the municipal asks with, with Steve, that was Michelle and myself today. We need to keep doing that and, and I think that there was a bunch of questions we had coming out of that, because that was really the document, because I'm going to hone in on the 1117 and the 1211. That was really the document that our previous town manager, Beth, had sent to all the departments. People had come back with a bunch of asks. Members of State of the Town went out then and talked to various departments, so most of the people at Stable did one. And then we had a bunch of the at-large members, the FinCom members do others. It was largely us, FinCom and, and at-large members who did, who did these conversations. And we have that all back now, but we need to put it in a way that's digestible for this board. Because, because I, you know, the, our town manager, Steve, is, is developing a budget for FY '27. That's a three-year view, so it's '27, '28, and '29, and it has additional asks in it, some of which may be meritorious, some of which we may choose to not support. But we need to create sort of a digestible document for the select board to weigh in on. So that's between Michelle, myself, and Steve to, to continue to hammer that out. But that's an important conversation on December 1st. School Committee has been having a lot of conversations about their, they're constantly, you know, looking at their level services and then what they want to add and reshuffling that with their management. So I think it's important we have a similar conversation, e, e, even though it'll be less in-depth. School Committee is going to come in and do a fairly extensive presentation. We've blocked all of this Friday State of the Town meeting for that. If they need a second session, which I suspect they may, we would, we would do that on the 5th. Beyond school and town needs, a lot of the other things either got closed out at State of the Town, at, sorry, at town meeting in this fall, particularly Worksroom 5, I think residential exemption, we've talked about, it's being deferred to the right time to implement it, which is next year, if, you know, on the, on the other side of an override. I think Worksroom 6, we largely implemented ourselves via our select board policies. So with the Rec Board piece going through, with the Mystic School Transfer going through, GIS going through at town meeting, the only other one really remaining besides municipal and, and school needs, which we're still working on, very important ones, is the, is the transfer station piece, because we've had a lot of conversations about that at State of the Town. I think what we had talked about, which I'll say to the group tonight, and if the group is supportive, I'll, I'll bring that on the 1st, is to create a staff-led committee to implement, or to explore and then implement the ideas that that group has talked about, which are on commercial and pay-as-you-throw. So if, if the group is supportive of, of that idea, led by town manager, DPW, transfer station, and clerk, with one or two volunteers added on, I can work with the volunteers, you know, Prosetta, Rachel, and, and Hafiz, to get something in front of this board for the next meeting. Because if, if we can get that one done, I think we're largely focused on municipal and schools, municipal needs and school needs for the next, call it, three weeks. And then if we have, State of the Town have its sort of final meeting on the 12th, we will, we can start to put, put together a summary report. And then from there, that would come to this body on the 1st, sorry, on the 5th of January, with a final draft report of the whole State of the Town work, as well as multiple override options that we would then start to discuss with the community. It wouldn't be one at that point, last time they did three. Assuming this board wants to do the same thing, but, but we can do it however we want. We want to call the special town meeting then as well. We, we have until late January, mid-January to do it, but we might as well just do it early, which would occur, as everyone can see, on, on February 9th. And then once we have, have a deck and multiple override options, we, we would start to have a series of info sessions. We have to finalize the warrant, which would probably be very late on the 19th. The only record vote that town meeting, special town meeting could take beyond opening and adjourning would be if we choose, if this body chooses to pursue capital via an exclusion. Because an exclusion requires town meeting, requires four members of this board and it requires town meeting. An, an override, an operating override, if we choose to do capital via an operating override, it, it does not. And then we have to transmit the figure to the clerk by the 14th. So after the special town meeting, we would have, you know, basically five days to get a number to the clerk. Either that, you know, I thought maybe we'd meet that Wednesday or that Friday to, to sort of pick the final number. So that's marrying the end of the process, which is, you know, has some important deadlines, but hasn't been fleshed out with the planning process between now and really the beginning of January to get everything settled out in the next, believe it or not, six weeks with two holidays in the middle. It's not a day left to waste.
Let's go. I have a comment on the, the transfer station.
Sure.
Three years and 10 days ago, the transfer station working group sent a memo to, to the select board. And so I think just consideration of the membership of a town, sort of town staff group with some volunteers, it might be helpful to just align that to make sure that there's-
I'll take a look at it, yeah. The membership, I forgot who the membership was exactly.
So that included-
I'm happy to, yeah.
LeAnn, Kim Pruitt, Nick. And then interestingly, I mean, I think that the end of that memo is exactly kind of where we are. It says, "Key areas for further study are consideration of pay-as-you-throw, implementation of programs to remove food, food waste, adoption of increases in scale fees, a short-term increase in scale fees and longer-term options to increase revenue." So it seems like sort of revising this or bringing it back really gets right to-
Where they left off.
Where they left off with that group.
Yep.
If you don't have that, I can send it to you.
I, I do, but thank you. Go ahead and write it in a while.
Yeah, it sounds good to move forward with the transfer station stuff.
The only thing I want to say about that is if we want to have that for 121 or a later meeting in December, or even into January, I just want to be mindful of our December agenda. So I, I think in our State of the Town, we said January for Prosetta, but let's, I mean, it's not going to be, it's going to be like December or January, we're not going to push it.
Why don't we just do it on January 5th?
Okay. Because we'll have another meeting in December as well.
I would, I would even say-
There's a meeting on the 15th as well, I just skipped over it on here, but yeah.
So in looking at the calendar, you know, we typically do a January budget summit.
First Friday in January.
Which might be helpful to get on here. Is that the, is that going to be the?
38th?
8th, we have an info session there. But we've done a-
Thursday, by the way, I think 38th is a Thursday.
The 9th would be, yes.
Yes, this is Thursday, the 8th, and then-
Get that calendar, good call. Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? It's a lot to digest, but thank you for doing it.
It, it is a lot to digest and I thank you for giving us some structure here, Paris. Knowing what I know about us and the way we work, and knowing that- Knowing what I know about us and the way we work, and knowing that we're going to have a lot of difficult in, in-depth conversations to get this done, I think it would be smart for us to commit to having the State of the Town or the overrides being a standing agenda item moving forward and, and being the first agenda item for our business every day. And I respect that we'll, we'll be interviewing people and have other things that we need to do. But if, if we don't actively carve out time to have these discussions, I don't think we do our best work at ten o'clock at night. And, and we owe it to the town to really give this good discussion. And if other people have to wait for us to get through those discussions, I consider that education. But I, I think that we need to do that moving forward.
Sounds good. Makes sense.
Yeah. Well, there's just four meetings, right? So there's the first, fifteenth, January fifth and January nineteenth. It's really only four meetings. We're, we're, we have to really debate all this stuff, so I, I would agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, if that, if that needs to be a motion, I'm happy to make it, but I, I don't want to be having these conversations this late at night. We won't be our best.
And, and maybe just being a little bit more selective about the, the rest of our agenda for the, that period of time.
Yeah.
It's really not going to be that long of a period of time, but it, we haven't really discussed it here, so.
I, I agree with you. Like, I think at this point, moving forward, this override question needs to be our prime focus.
So just in, we tend to have a very specific December agendas with a lot of things that come in. And like a couple, we have to do all of our licenses. Um, we'll have some-
Water rates.
Water, yeah.
We have appointments.
I was getting to that. I saved the best for last. Water and sewer. So I agree with you that we should have it first. I think it's going to be tough for us to punt some things that has, have to happen in December. Um, we'll also be having, um, interviews with the town manager finalists in December. So, um, we're going to have some potentially just busy the first and the fifteenth.
We have a meeting on the first, we have a meeting on the fifteenth. I, I would suggest if, if it's, if it's State of the Town, we have, we have some ordinary course business. I agree with Mike. If we can punt off some of the non-ordinary course business, that just can wait, that, that's good. And then we have town managers, a lot of very critical priority. I'm open to meeting on the eighth as well. I mean, for the, for these, for these conversations, it's just so important. Because we, we need to be able to start talking to the community about multiple options. I appreciate, you know, we, we don't need to pick an option until early February, but even to get to a point where we're talking about multiple options, we have to be, I think in a good spot by early January.
So maybe we can either do it on our own, there, do it on our own or ask Patty if we can just send out a doodle to understand what evenings in the, between the week of the eighth and the fifteenth folks are available, not just for a meeting here, but because we'll need to do town manager interviews.
Yeah.
We're going to have to get that-
For example, we could clear off licenses and, and water and sewer that night, right? If you can't make it on the, unless you're dying to be-
Evening of the day?
Part of.
Part of water and sewer.
Part of water and sewer.
Water's coming on the first, so I don't think we're going to reschedule him, but.
Licenses we could do any.
Yeah, for sure.
Just cover off all their stuff.
We could do licenses on a State of the Town morning too, but let's, I think this is just-
I'm sorry, if there's an easy business that we can knock off.
Yeah. So I think this is a question for maybe for our Wednesday meeting with Patty is, between Patty and Jen, because I know Jen, you know, they both have the stack of business licenses. Like, we know we have water, you know, we have business licenses and stacks of things. Like, what else do we need to do in December in the sequence? Monday nights in person versus Fridays on Zoom and bang, bang through some votes. Uh, we could even deliberate our, well, no, I guess we'll, we'll pick the tree people on the first. If there's any deliberation, we could try to take it up on a Friday too. Okay. Good. Anything else? I know we have the consent agenda, but anything else on State of the Town?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I guess some things to sign, including-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Start this way. Us, all those in favor of adjourn? Okay. Thanks, everybody.